Okay. Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the May tenth, two thousand seventeen Neshoba Regional School Committee regular meeting. First, I want to welcome our two new members, Elise Crossland from Lancaster and Steve Rubenstein from Stowe. Thank you both, and welcome to the school committee. We're glad to have you here. Tonight, our first order of business, by the way, I'm calling you in at six oh one, Alita. Tonight, our first order of business is election of chair, vice-chair, secretary, and we need to approve the meeting calendar. So first up, I'd like to open up the floor to nominations on election of a chair. Kathy?
I nominate Lorraine. You want to ask her?
Sure.
And you'll second it. Any other nominations? Thank you.
Do you accept?
I will accept.
We didn't vote.
Thank you. We can vote them all. We can vote them all at the same time. Okay. Election of a vice-chair. Do we have any nominations for vice-chair? I'll nominate Kathy Codyann.
Thank you.
Can we get a second on that?
Second.
And any other nominations? Nope. Okay. Do you accept the nomination?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. And an election of a secretary. Any nominations?
And I'll make Lynn.
I do, too. I'm going to second that one. Lynn is not here to accept. But can we just have her accept it? How do we do that?
Well, we voted, and then she can resign.
Yeah, she can resign. Okay. So I need someone to move the new election of officers for the FY seventeen eighteen school year. Lorraine Ramasco is chair, Kathy Codyann, vice-chair, Lynn Coletti is secretary.
So moved.
Thank you. And you want a second? Steve, you want a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any conversation? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Steve, are you? Okay. It's unanimous, and it passes. Thank you. Okay. Now, we have the two thousand seventeen eighteen school committee calendar. Alita, thanks for doing this, working this up for us. So we've added, because we have the, our new folks on board, we've added June seventh, I think we added the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-first? No.
June seventh and June twenty-first.
Twenty-first is Gold's Workshop.
Right. And the twenty-first is the Gold's Workshop. So other than that, does anybody have any concerns? You know, we're probably around budget time. We may add a meeting or two.
Why don't we add them in now? That way, it's not a question.
How about, we could do that, or we could add them in as we need them versus just adding meetings. Anybody else have any thoughts on this? Kathy?
Yeah, I would prefer that we add it as we need them. I think we'd get better as the years go on.
We're getting better at it.
Yeah. So, and I think we've been pretty good about adding meetings that we needed to have.
But a good thought. Thank you for that. All right. So any other conversation on the calendar?
Yes, November, I think only has one meeting. Is that right? Yes, I would like to propose that we have meet on the twenty-ninth, because it's a long, it's a whole month before we see each other in December to do that. And I'm pretty sure we will have plenty to do, perhaps in anticipation of budget of other activity.
That's very early to, you know, wait. We're just barely starting at that point in time. And then you're going to be week to week, you'll have one Wednesday and another, you know, back-to-back meetings on Wednesday. I think that's probably very likely why that wasn't put on there.
I don't know if I agree with the reasoning, but I don't have a problem with adding a meeting in November, and I'll tell you why. We are going to be building a couple of key committees that are not finance-related. So I'm okay with adding the twenty-ninth unless you folks, I mean, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with it, yeah.
Anybody have any issues with it? Okay. Alita, can you toss that on there? And then there was one other.
So on the twenty-first, is that going to be strictly a workshop-type meeting?
Yes, it's only a workshop. There's going to be no regular report-outs, no regular agenda items.
So I have a little concern of end-of fiscal year financial or budget moves that may come up for discussion, and we may not be prepared to have those discussions on June seventh.
So why wouldn't, well, those discussions are really with the administration, aren't they generating those discussions?
Well, if it's going to be year-end surplus, we may want to have a discussion about what, if anything, or perhaps nothing to do, and we'll probably be in a pretty good idea of what that surplus will be at the end of June.
So I think I would kick that to the finance subcommittee for you guys to make a recommendation if we need to do that at this point, because we're kind of talking about not sure. All right?
Well, we did have last year, I mean, we had things where, March point, we had, we voted some money for transportation, I believe it was, for a spit, for some, you know, with the surpluses. So, I mean, we need to do that.
Okay, so we've got, we've got three, two meetings. Why don't we take it meeting by meeting, and we'll make that decision as we need it, rather than, because I don't want to encumber the twenty-first, because we're going to have a pretty intense agenda just with goal setting. So let's take it meeting by meeting, Kathy.
Just relative to any budget surpluses end of year, wouldn't the superintendent go forward with recommendations on what?
Right. Right, that's what I said, yeah.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on that.
Absolutely.
And are there circumstances under which we have to approve it, or does she just report to us?
If we have, want to take an action, we would need to vote if there's a particular thing, as opposed to allowing the surplus to go into the excess of deficiency fund. So opportunities could be other post-employee benefits is one. We have a bus transportation revolving fund.
So, you know what? We're going down a rat hole right now and talking about something we don't have a handle on, right, Mr. Auditor Man? Right? Thank you.
Might as well about process and what comes from the superintendent and what comes from us.
It does. So I'm going to say that let's, let's not encumber the discussion with that right now. We will look at it as we need it. And to your point, Mark, yeah, if there is surplus, then I'm sure that the superintendent is going to bring it forward.
We're already thinking ahead.
And you folks, finance is going to make the recommendation up through the school committee. But, good point. Okay. So with the addition of the November twenty-ninth meeting, regular school committee meeting, can I have someone make a motion to approve the FY seventeen eighteen school committee calendar as amended?
So moved.
Kathy?
Second.
And a second, Mark. Thank you. Any questions, conversations? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. So next on our agenda is citizens' comments, but I'm wondering if you would like to, no, we'll go ahead.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Because we've got, I think we're going to do a quick flip with one thing and introduce the Neshoba Regional High School twenty seventeen valedictorian and salutatorian. And there's Dr. Graham. Come in, please. So share with us.
So, Jordan Adira, can you? So I am very proud to present our two thousand seventeen valedictorian, Jordan Bricknell, and salutatorian, Adira Balzac. And if I may, I just wanted to say a few words about them. And I wanted to thank two of our guidance counselors, Dan Glover and Katie Abruzzi, for helping me with this. But I first wanted to start and talk a little bit about Jordan Bricknell, our valedictorian. Jordan is a gem of a person. Yes, she is a powerhouse of a student who aced her college testing and has a perfect four-point-oh out of four-point-oh in Neshoba. However, it is her approach to life that makes her stand out among her peers. She is a quiet, calm, and steady young woman whose friends and family mean the world to her. She is also a three-season athlete who is a captain on the Springs Track Team. As a captain, she speaks when needed but primarily leads by example. Jordan's maturity is well beyond her years, as she is motivated in all things by the desire to just do her best and not for any other reason. It can be said that Jordan is a glue person. She works within a group to bring them to function in a successful way. She is equally happy to do this as a leader or follower. She will be attending Tufts University this coming fall, and the Neshoba community will dearly miss her next year. So I present to you our valedictorian of the class. And our salutatorian, Adira Balzac. Adira will be attending MIT next year, and she aspires to work with veterinary prosthetics in order to combine her passion for animals with her love for physics and technology. While in high school, she participated with robotics, researched complex fluids through the BU-Rise program, performed in the North Cambridge Family Opera, and enrolled in a blacksmithing course in Boston. Adira is a true scholar who is energized by all the intricacies of education. She takes what she learns in the classroom and applies it across all disciplines, looking for creative ways to make connections. She enrolled in multiple college courses throughout high school simply because she loves to learn for the sake of learning. Adira is passionate about building a strong foundation of knowledge and will no doubt excel in the area she aspires to specialize in at the college level. Our salutatorian, Adira Balzac.
Congratulations, Jordan. How do you do it? Congratulations. Thank you. And can we take some pictures for you while we're home with? You hold the flowers, you hold them. So I can't throw off. Thanks, and I'll see you guys. Okay. Now we can get back on track, but I just didn't want the ladies to have to wait. Okay. Our next agenda item is citizens' comments. And as we do with every meeting, we have citizens' comments. I want to share with you our two policies. First of all, do we have anyone in the audience who has a citizens' comment? Two, okay. So citizens' comments generally need to relate to something that is on the agenda for that evening. It is, is it an opportunity for citizens and residents of our three towns to share, or anyone within the school community, to share their thoughts on an idea? We limit the comments to three minutes. It's different than in a typical town meeting style where there's a give-and-take and a discussion. This is you giving us your input, and we take the information under advisement. I'm going to ask you to make sure that you direct your comments to me, and I know that you won't do this, I'm sure that you won't do this, but I'm going to read that policy just to be fair, as we do every meeting. No improper conduct or remarks, I can't even believe I have to say that, but I do. And we can't hear any conversation about a personnel, anyone in the district, anyone on the school committee, but no individual. So now that we've done that, who would like to go first?
For those of you who do not know me, and that may be especially true for people who are new on the school committee, my name is Tim Castner. At the end of this year, I will have taught at the high school in the history department for twenty years. I've also lived for almost sixteen years in the community of Lancaster, and I was trying to do the math, and my children between them have attended this school district for, I believe, a total of thirty-five years. It's interesting that you just recognized the valedictorian and salutatorian, in part because Dr. Graham neglected to mention that Adira Balzac is the leading expert on the history of the butternut squash and how it was developed in Stowe, Massachusetts. But it's also interesting because four years ago, the valedictorian was someone by the name of Alex Oblowski, a resident of Bolton. And he decided to use the opportunity of his valedictory address to raise the question of the appropriateness of the continued use of chieftain as the mascot for the high school. In his opinion, that was inappropriate. Since then, I have attempted in a variety of ways to try and get a conversation started about this topic. At the beginning of this school year, we were presented with these lovely T-shirts. I don't know exactly where they came from, but they were delivered in all of our mailboxes. On the back, they said "Come Together." On the front, it included the district logo and said "Neshoba Chieftain" at the bottom. For me, it has been difficult or even impossible to wear this shirt, because while I believe it's vital that we come together as a community, I find it a violation of my conscience to come together around Native American symbolism in this way. I believe all of you should have received an email from me, hopefully the new members received it as well, in which I included three different documents expressing concern on this topic. I just, I know I have limited time, but I just want to briefly say that my concern in this comes to a large degree from my relatively deep knowledge of the history of this area and having taught that history to local students for a relatively long time. As I'm sure many of you are aware, King Philip's War was fought right in this community, and the legacies and names of that are all around us. Lake Boone in Stowe was named for Matthew Boone, who was killed during that conflict by Native Americans. The Old Pompasidikit School in Stowe. You have, of course, Watiquatic Hill, where the Wheeler Garrison was, where all four residents of the Wheeler Garrison were killed by Native Americans on the same day that the community of Lancaster was completely destroyed. This was a genocidal war with horrific atrocities committed on both sides. Within the community of Lancaster, the young men were given bounties for returning wolf ears and Native American scalps. Given this history, I think it's very difficult, let me just say one more thing, I know my time's just about up. Having taught history and the civil rights movement in this district for a very long time, I know that these topics can be complicated and difficult. Stowe, Bolton, and Lancaster each had active Klan chapters in the nineteen twenties. Both Stowe and Lancaster actually had Klan battles that took place in nineteen twenty-four in the communities. I've known students who have literally found their grandparent, their great-grandparents' Klan robes in the attic. You can imagine the difficult discussions this led to. The town of Bolton actually had minstrel shows in the nineteen fifties. And so I have a petition that I would like to present that has been signed by thirty-six staff members at the high school, requesting that the school committee review, take it among your goals for next year, to review whether or not it is appropriate to continue to use the chieftain mascot in Native American imagery. I'd like to say that those thirty-six people do not all have the same views on this topic. Some of them simply want it to be reviewed, some of them would be happy to see some sort of compromise where we continue to be chieftains, but without any Native American imagery, and some people want, actually, some people wanted to demand that the chieftain and Native American imagery be removed immediately.
So do you have the petition with you?
I do.
You can bring that up to me. And I just want to just state for the record that this topic is not on the agenda, but understanding that you're a resident with a concern, certainly will hear it. I will also say that the, that the email came very, very late last night, and I've been in meetings, like, day job meetings, so I will review it, and we'll make sure that the new folks get it as well. And while this isn't a discussion, I feel that I at least owe you something. Alex Oblowski graduated in my daughter's class, so I remember the conversation well, and I remember the discussion well. I think this topic is an important one. I think it's an emotional one. I think it's one that has views, three-hundred-and-sixty-degree views. I think it's, I don't think it's a discussion for the school committee, but I do think it warrants a review. And I, and I would like to know from the superintendent's perspective, you know, where you stand on this, because before it comes to the school committee, we need your input.
I value your point, Mr. Castner, with regards to the fact that I have no problems with starting the conversation. I think the conversation has started already. And, but I don't think that this is something you could rush. And I think to your point, even as you were describing the thirty-six different individuals and the different, you know, I would agree with Chair Ramasco, the viewpoints are, I mean, as much as I appreciate and respect your viewpoint, you need to know that as I walked through the high school today, I had a lot of people pull me aside and say, just so you know, this is what I think. So it's going to, it's going to be, to your point, I think you used the word "sensitive topic" earlier, and I think that that's exactly where we're at. You know, it's a very sensitive topic, and I think that there's, there are a lot of viewpoints that are going to want to be heard on this. So I think before it rises to any type of level here, it needs to be flushed out at that, at the school level first. So, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't encourage that we rush through this.
So we're going to rely on you to look into it and do some research and review for us.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, and then we can, we can decide where to take it from here.
Where we go. Right.
Could I make just one very brief addition?
Sure.
I think if, if you review the materials that I've sent to you, one of the concerns that I personally had is that while I have done a number of things to try and get the conversation going, I believe that ultimately, because of the nature of the conversation, that the conversation has to be led and directed by people within the administrative structure, not by groups of concerned staff members. And I'm also very concerned about, with us on the verge of hiring a new principal, I do not want them to be immediately thrown into sort of the maelstrom of this. I want them to be shielded from the political winds, and so...
Oh, you know that's not going to happen.
Well, it can't happen entirely.
This is Neshoba.
But there are, but there are things that I think could be done by the school committee and the superintendent specifically to protect that new individual.
So I think we're going to rely, why don't you bring that up? And I appreciate you sharing that with us, and then we're going to move on. There was another citizens' comment. If it's on the same topic...
Just piggybacking a little bit on Mr. Castner's...
But can I just say one thing? Just because, you know, if it's on the same topic, just making sure we're kind of in line with the policies. Give me something a little bit different.
Sure. So I have a slightly different perspective for Mr. Castner's as a member of the Native Community and as a teacher who's had students as a member of the Native Community.
Tell us your name.
My name's Quentin Burks. I'm an English student.
Oh, you're Quentin Burks, okay.
That's me. Yes, so hopefully, maybe you've heard of me. Hopefully, nice things. This is my first time here at a school committee meeting, and I'm very excited to be talking to you guys. So I just have a little bit of a different perspective since my ancestors came from what's now known as Virginia. I have a long lineage back to a guy named Chief Powhatan, who was one of the guys who met the settlers who started Virginia. So, really interesting, it was a summer project I did a few years ago, really interesting results, and it brought up some really cool questions, because my dad's side of the family is sort of entrenched in the tradition a little bit, but kind of removed from it, and I got really interested in the topic as a result, and that my scholarship in American literature is focused on Native American literature. So this is an area of humanities I've studied a lot, and I had a deeper connection to it than I thought. And one of the questions that comes up a lot for me, and has come up several times for students who belong to a Native community that participate in the research projects that presented them on the mascot every year, is what does this mascot mean to people who are members of the generalized Native community, since it's a generalized symbol, versus students who are not? And, you know, what became really clear is it's pretty divisive, right? Like, when I look at Neshoba's symbol, like, it, to me, it's like a symbol of displacement, it's a symbol of oppression, you know, it's a symbol of marginalization, because like, the history that's represented by that symbol for me is destruction. Sixty million deaths in a hundred years in the continental U.S., South America, surrounding islands. Poverty rates and, you know, death rate, like, life expectancy rates that are equivalent to Somalia on Native American reservations today. So in other words, a very complicated past that is paired with a equally complicated present, right? And how do you leverage the use of imagery that represents real, active, living people with rich traditions in a reductive way? So what does that mean to me when I see the mascot? I feel marginalized. And as a member of the community, like, and, and like, for the kids more so than myself, you know, how do you leverage the fact that, like, your heritage is a mascot which generally represents values that are not directly linked to those that are supposed to be represented by that symbol? That becomes really, really complicated for, though not many, the members of the community who are supposed to be represented by that thing. So though I'm removed from it, not all the students that I've had are, and I have one this year in my freshman class, who gave one of the best debate speeches I've ever heard about why to change that mascot and what it meant to him. And to me, if one kid goes to Neshoba and feels marginalized in any way by something as shiftable as a mascot, then it's worth it to do it because it interrupts our core values.
So I accept what you're saying, certainly. I'm not going to weigh in and, I don't have an opinion at this point. That doesn't mean I won't have an opinion, because I think you, you definitely know me well enough to know that at some point I will have an opinion. But I, I would like to let the appropriate process occur without lagging, just to address this, because I know this has come up in the past. It's come up.
Yep.
And I remember a couple of years ago, I'm not supposed to be doing this. A couple of years ago, there was a gentleman who graduated from Neshoba and sent an email into one or two of the teachers and CC'd me on it, and I responded to it. And that may be one of your attachments, it was so eloquently written. But again, I think this discussion is a big, broad, community-impactful discussion, and it needs to be done appropriately with consideration.
For sure.
Not just from those of us here, but those who are in the Native American community to whom this may affect, right?
Yes. And I think it's just like a last word, like, and I think I speak for Tim when I say that it's very important for us, and I think the other people who are here that support this and who signed the petition, to know that, like, we recognize that it's a very tricky issue and that the mascot means a lot to many people for very good reasons. And we respect that, we respect the tradition of those things.
Well, and, you know, historically, icons do, over the decades, centuries, sometimes take a different meaning than their original intent. I'm not suggesting that, I'm not, I'm not picking a side.
Sure.
I'm just saying, this is a very deep and rich conversation that needs to be had. So thank you both for coming in. You made me violate my own policy. I just said that on camera, but I think that the information was, was definitely worth hearing, so we appreciate that.
And you can blame it on me, Lorraine. It's my first time here, so I...
No, no, no. I'll take it. I've taken it anyway. So thank you both for coming in. I appreciate that. Okay. Student repri, and now we have Nick Melis from the high school.
How can I top that?
Yes.
The Unified Track Team is doing well. The team hosts Oaklot tomorrow, and then will host the league meet on May twenty-third. The varsity boys and girls track teams are preparing for the class meets this Wednesday and hosting the league championship next year. The boys' tennis team is four to four, while the girls are six to two. Due to rain, the teams have been playing many back-to-back matches. The baseball team is seven and two. The team had a big win over Saint John's Hudson and Doggone Quest. The softball team is eight and two, sitting in first place in the league right now. Our softball teams will be hosting, will be traveling to Worcester State on May nineteenth to play Holy, to play Holy Name Under the Lights in an autism awareness game. The girls' lacrosse team will host a tough matchup with North Middlesex last night, eight to seven, while the boys' lacrosse teams had an exciting win over Shepherd Hill yesterday. Both teams are seven and five overall in the season and doing well. The regular season comes to an end at the end of May, but we are hoping our teams qualify for playoffs, as teams are very close to clinching playoff spots. The sophomores will be participating in math MCAS testing next week, on Tuesday, May sixteenth, and Wednesday, May seventeenth. Students should bring a sharpened number-two pencil and calculator. Luther Brevinck Middle School participated in National Poetry Month, where many students participated in the third annual Seven Bridge Writers Collaboratory, Collaborative Poetry Contest. Guest judge Lex Tomma reads upwards of three hundred poems submitted for the contest from students in grades two through twelve. All winning poems are published online at sevenbridgerewriters.blogspot.com. LBMS also recognized Earth Day, with support of the LBMS Green Team and Lancaster Gardens. An advisory group worked on planning, planting flowers, and improving the landscape of the school. Check it out next time you're at the school. Advisory groups are also, have also spent time discussing ways in which LBMS can take further steps to go green. Neshoba's choir will have their final concert showcasing the work of Concert Choir, Women's Ensemble, Unified Choir, Chamber Choir, and Chamber Choir, as well as special solo performances by our leading singers. The concert is next Friday, May nineteenth, at seven o'clock. Neshoba... Nishoba Bands will be hosting their final concert for the year as well. This is Friday, May twelfth, beginning at seven PM in the NRA Auditorium. The concert will feature both intermediate and advanced jazz band, jazz bands, as well as the concert band, and will feature the graduating class as they present their solo works throughout the concert. The first year of our symphonic band is wrapping up. The group consists of thirty-five-plus members that are made up of students, teachers, faculty, and community members. Our final concert will be held on Thursday, June fifteenth at seven PM in the auditorium. Bachelors have been released for the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen school year and are available in the music office. Finally, Nishoba will be hosting a teen substance abuse forum tomorrow night and a whole school assembly this Friday. During the event, there will be, we will be showing the film If Only and a panel presentation. Doors open at five-thirty, and the film will start at six-thirty, with a panel discussion following. Students will participate in the building-wide assembly on Friday, May twelve, to watch the same film and listen to the panel presentation.
Does anybody have any questions for Nick?
Is this your last report out?
No, I will be here until next week.
Yes, you will! You can't leave yet, we need you one more.
I'm here.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Nick, terrific. Um, okay, I think I'm gonna start, turn it over to Superintendent Clinch to introduce a new-
A new principal. Oh. We'd like to bring Kyle Grady to the table, please. Kyle Grady, it is my pleasure to welcome you here tonight. I'm gonna read a little bit of your bio, and then we're gonna open it up to questions.
He's the principal of-
Hale School, he is the new Hale School principal, and we are thrilled to have him on board. So I'm gonna read your bio, and then we'll open it up, so if people, people've got questions or some such, we can ask. So Kyle Grady is the Assistant Principal at Thurston Middle School in Westwood, a position he has held for four years. He took on the interim principal role at Thurston for half a school year during the principal's maternity leave. Before going to Westwood, he served as a high school assistant principal in the Winchandon Public Schools. Kyle taught history in the Manchester Essex Public Schools, where he was also a Teachers' Association representative, soccer coach, and debate coach. Beyond his bachelor's degree, which is from Earlham College in Richmond, Indiana, he holds a master's degree in education from Tausse University, and Kyle lives with his beautiful family in Ashland. Um, so if you hear a couple of terms there that are consistent with Brooke, Ashland and Winchandon, and with old disclosure, we say yes. So I had the, the wonderful pleasure of working with Kyle when he was the assistant principal, I believe I hired him at that point in time, uh, when he was in Winchandon, and it was just such a pleasure to work with him. And, uh, you know, when I saw his, his application come across for Hale, and I remember saying to him, if you rise through this, you rise through this on your own, I remember that conversation, and it, because I'll be standing at the back, I won't have anything to do with the process. And he said, yeah, I under- absolutely understand that. And so I stood back and I watched as the search committee did their thing, and then brought it before the principals committee and did their thing, and then we had the forum, and then we collected all the data, and, um, it was openly acknowledged that we had two very strong candidates at the end, um, but it was, it was overwhelmingly in support of Kyle Grady taking this position, so I am thrilled. He's an academic, he's a disciplinarian, he, he gets kids, he gets the social-emotional component, and I think he's just exactly what we need.
I think she likes you.
She does.
Sounds like it.
Yeah, she does. So having said that, I turn it over to the school committee members, I don't know if you've got some questions you'd like to ask them, but-
Welcome, welcome, welcome. Um, I think Lynn and I were at the, uh, community forum, and I'm, since I'm not a Stowe resident, I sat in the back and didn't speak, but Lynn did ask a question or two, and I, just from my observation, I was impressed that when you spoke to the community, you actually walked into the community. You didn't present to them, you kind of engaged with them, and, and I remember thinking, that's exactly what we need, that's what we need. So, anyway, Lynn, or anyone else have questions for, for Kyle? Thank you so much, Lynn.
Come on, there's one else there.
Well, that's nice of you. When do you start?
Um, so officially, I start July first, but I was already over there this afternoon at Hale, I met with Patrick, and went over a couple of things, went down to Central, to the Center School and, and met with Ross, um, just to kind of get a flavor for how things are going on. There'll be a couple more times where I'll be over at Hale, um, uh, for like, afternoon meetings, I think, um, I think Patrick has to present at his upcoming school committee, so I'm gonna meet with him before that, and, uh, the week before July first, I'm gonna have some time in District, uh, just kind of look at student schedules and, and kind of get, get the state of affairs more officially, so... But July first is the, is the, is the date that my contract begins.
I wanna ask this, but I guess it's the right place.
Why don't you whisper it to Mark, and he'll tell you.
What do you think you're gonna do first?
Oh, that's a good question. What do you think you're gonna do first?
Oh, wow.
Uh, honestly, I think the first order of business is really to, to take a stock of what's going on with the faculty. I have particular concerns about our sixth grade class, they're gonna have six different principals-
Next year's sixth grade?
Yeah, they're gonna have, um, you know, six different principals in the course of about three years, when you factor in, um, the changes. So they are, you know, but I, you know, kind of wanna take stock of things, I don't think you rush into anything with a lot of changes.
Yeah.
You know, the faculty, I think, has been through a lot too, there's been quite a bit of changes there, so really being a good listener and seeing what it is that they feel they need, um, and doing the absolute best I can for all students and staff to try to be a stabilizing force. Um, so I'm not really answering your question, because I think I really need to kind of get a, get a feel for what is necessary, um, and then kind of, you know, talk to Brooke and come up with a punch list of moves and some things.
Perfect, good luck. Thank you, and thanks for coming tonight, we really appreciate it. Good luck, if there's anything you need from us, let Brooke know, and she'll definitely let us know.
Great, thank you, I'm very excited, and thank you for having me.
We're glad you're here.
We're really glad to have you here, we're very excited.
See if you've seen that this time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
That was weird.
Okay, um, I think we've made these poor folks from Luther Burbank wait too long, so I'm gonna apologize to students and parents and principals and teachers, and I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Well, I'm gonna turn it over, actually, to, to Prince, our, our principal, Laura Friend, and, and have her do the appropriate introductions. Uh, we're thrilled to have you here tonight, we thank you so much, we're looking forward to what you're bringing to us. Um, I hope that you'll do a nice tee-up here for us, so that we know exactly what we're watching.
Well, the students are ready to do the tee-up, but so I'm just gonna introduce who we have here. I'd like to introduce Margot Sonia, a seventh-grade student, Sarah Leonard, seventh-grade student, and Lisa Sama, our technology engineering teacher extraordinaire at Luther Burbank who made all this happen. The presentation is completely student-driven and generated, and they know they have ten minutes. No pressure.
I wonder who made that.
So we're here to help and support you, okay? So, um, Miss, uh, Alita has your presentation up there, and I know you have your notes.
Hi, we're from Luther Burbank Middle School, and today we are presenting about the 3D modeling program that we're doing in our engineer class, our teacher is Salma.
Um, what is 3D modeling? Using 3D modeling software to transform two-dimensional images into three-dimensional images that show length, width, and depth is 3D modeling. We use the One-Two-Three-D design from Autodesk. The software that we use has so many options that the possibilities are seemingly endless. However, some other softwares can design buildings, clothing, or even replacement body parts. 3D modeling is most certainly an advanced and new type of technology, and our school is very privileged to own a 3D printer. Not only is it nice to have a printer, we're also lucky to end up with software that is rarely confusing and is easy to work with. Additionally, with this software, everyone using it discovers pos- new possibilities and options each time they use it.
Our first project with the printer was to make a puzzle. Here are the pieces to puzzle. We started with wood to create blocks with our hands that fit together to make a cube. If these are being mass-produced today as a toy, obviously each individual would not be put together by hand. This is one reason that 3D printing is the wave of the future. In the near future, factories will be able to easily design and mass-produce products using bigger, faster, and more 3D printers. What we did in the classroom was a small simulation of this. Learning this program is helping us become more invented, inventive, and we can see our creations come to life. In this sample project, we got to know the program, making our handmade designs into 3D modeled ones.
Students got familiar with the software by playing and experimenting with many possibilities and features. The things that kids were designed were not sophisticated, but they helped the kids understand the software more and helped them get a feel for 3D modeling. Many of the features included color, size, shape, and even text. All of these options made students yearning to go to engineering class so they could design more cool things. Students were free to design almost anything they wanted. The software was not difficult to work with either, we rarely found a problem with it.
We built our individual cubes to perfection, so they would be printed without fault. The program seems intimidating at first, but just like anything else, with some practice and teaching, it becomes easier. Creating a three-dimensional figure is something that's hard to wrap your mind around. How can you draw something that has length, width, and a height? That's a question I asked when we began, but now it's a simpler concept. We construct and put shapes together and customize them to the size needed. Tools such as merging, grouping, inverting, extruding, help to get the perfect figure.
The printer was absolutely amazing to everyone, it was exciting to use. Many of us were mesmerized watching the nozzle move back and forth to turn a design that we created into a nearly exact replica. However, many other printers can do even more advanced things. For example, our printer can only currently print plastic, while others can print with wood, food, or glass. Some hospitals have printers that can print small body parts for prosthetics. Others can print very tiny computer parts that are nearly microscopic. Still others, some of the most complex and advanced printers can print chocolate, clothing, and cars.
Chocolate is complex.
This is the final product of our cubes. Not everyone got to print a piece, because this printer is slower than many of the most expensive ones. Another pro about 3D printing is that the product is close to flawless. Over the years, some talk has taken place about robots taking over people's jobs, because there is little human margin of error. In many places, robots are already building cars, but 3D modeling ensures a high percentage of perfect products. If you notice the difference between the handmade and printed products, you can see why.
Once everyone was situated with the software, we needed a project. Our assignment was to design a name tag using a pack of instructions that was personalized with each of our names. The name tags were fun to make, and you could design them with your names. Each student had a lot of freedom with the name tag. You could write any name people call you, you could choose any font you wanted, and you could decide on the color of your name tag. We had so much fun making the tags that we thought you would like some too.
Salma, I was naming tags for the entire board.
Now here's the problem, the two new members.
We're on it.
I'll share, I'll share with the least, and Mark will share with the most.
Susan?
So where did you get Mrs., where did you get the printer? How did you get the printer? How do we get the printers?
Minuteman, Minuteman, I work for Minuteman, Nick?
Oh.
Neil?
That's awesome.
You go to the next slide.
Thank you so much.
You go to the next slide.
Mark?
Can you tap on the video I think you will play?
You guys are doing awesome.
Thank you. Tap on the video. Can I just have the other place?
Um, you should be able just to hit the play button on it, hold on, is there a play button on it?
No. If you don't click on it, if it's embedded in PowerPoint-
It is embedded.
It means if you just click on it, even though there's not a play button, it'll still play.
Jennifer? Oh, Jennifer Leal is not here.
We're gonna see her tonight. Thank you.
Nicole?
Nicole, I will make sure I go see her.
Alita?
Alita!
It's for you. Alita, this is for you.
Thank you.
And Lynn?
Margot, it's okay, it doesn't count in the ten minutes.
It's okay, Margot. What I did was, I embedded a video of our, the printer working, you know. But you're all invited to my classroom to see it, if you'd like.
That'll remind them.
So how soon, how long did it take to make all those cubes?
Oh, I don't know, it takes-
These cubes each took about an hour, these pieces, which is why I did not, I decided not to print them for the entire seventh grade, 'cause I'd still be printing them now. So I wanted to find something that they could make and print and take home, 'cause it's disappointing to make something and not be able to take it home with you, I think.
So they, are they actually doing programming?
It is not programming, um, it's not coding, it's, um, using, just, it's just using a program that's already been created, like when you type in Google Docs or something. But instead of, it does, um, 3D mo- it, but they're, they're making, they're making, um, graphic images in this.
So are they drawing them first?
They can, they're drawing them within the program, using the tools within the program to make it. They used, um, rectangle tools and text tools and, um, circles and all of that to make those tags. That, that was not a template, they made it themselves, from beginning to end.
Would you be completely offended if we didn't show that video? 'Cause we're gonna have to sign off and sign back in.
No, it's fine, yeah.
So imagine we've seen a video.
Well, not only have we s- not, this is so cool, like, this is enough to see that you guys created this from nothing, so go, go-
Tell us what, yeah, tell us what the video would have shown us.
So the nozzle, so the printer has an arm that comes down with a little nozzle, and with the printer you have to buy rolls of plastic string, or, I forget, filmage, that you put into the printer, and so it layers the plastic layer by layer, very thin layers, to build the structure of the design. The process become, is becoming more and more advanced and is used to perform practical miracles. In Florida, doctors and scientists have worked together to give young cancer patients a growing esophagus, printed by a 3D printer. 3D modeling is also used for animation in cartoons, especially Disney movies. It can be used for architecture and extreme advanced designing in anything. In January of two thousand fifteen, China had accomplished building the world's tallest 3D-printed building, a five-story apartment block. In Amsterdam, the first 3D bridge is being constructed over a small river using robots. In Germany, they've even built a ten-meter-long 3D-printed boat.
Maybe one day you'll find yourself flying in a 3D-model airplane. The future of design is this machine. Learning about it in school has made us all better with technology, it has brightened our horizons and may even lead some of us to careers that have advanced designing. We'll now take any more questions.
Wonderful job! Great questions, Lynn. So, after doing this, what do you wanna do?
I'm gonna do everything now.
You've already got a bridge and an esophagus.
I feel like there's so many careers that this could include, and there's a lot of, like, online templates that you can use. Now I have to convince my parents about it, pretty please.
Got a nice tattoo polish.
Anyone else? Alita, that's a good question.
Um, so, I know you're young at this point, but has this opened your eyes as far as either one of you for something that you may wanna take a second look at, maybe as you're getting older?
Yeah, so, yeah. I think, like, I have no idea what sort of career I want to go into, but it's kind of like, added to the engineering aspect of what I could do.
Do you feel the same way?
Yeah.
Well, good luck, congratulations, great work, very exciting, thank you so much for coming in. What? The, the 3D printer that made the esophagus, did they use plastic?
No, I-
It's another material.
Yeah, it's another material. Yeah, it's another material. There's so many materials that they're using now, and there's so many different types of 3D printers.
Just want to tell you that a friend of mine is having her new knee printed right now. It takes two weeks to print it, and she will have it in... I don't know what it's made out of, they're doing it, there's a hospital southern New Hampshire, or up in Nashua, I think is one of the few hospitals that does it.
Thank you, ladies. Superintendent Klansky, thank you so much for bringing students to us.
Isn't it fabulous? It just fills your soul and you can see what they're doing.
In general, okay?
We're moving on, so it's like you.
It is. The programs that are engaging like that, do we look into expanding it to the other two towns? Or do they have something similar but not quite?
I think it really varies, to be honest. I think that's a really good question. I think I've mentioned this before, because I think you've asked a similar question before. Our admin group is very, very close, very, very tight, and these kinds of ideas are shared amongst each other all the time. And you need to, you know, with Minuteman, I mean, they bring a lot to us, and this is a perfect example of that, you know? And they're across the district. So it just depends.
All right, we're gonna move on. We've got another guest with us, but before we do this, by the way, Lynn, congratulations, you've been elected as the Secretary of the Shog River School District... School Committee!
In your absence.
We assumed you would accept.
They did it quick so you couldn't oppose.
All right, so Pat, do you want to come up? And Mr. Sullivan? Or who's hosting Mr. Sullivan?
Pat, do you want to come up and just do a T F with us, please? Thank you.
Hi!
Hello.
So I have Dick Sullivan here today from Powers &amp; Sullivan. He has performed our fiscal year '16 audit, and he would like to go over some of the final points of our audit.
Okay, fine. I'll try to make this brief, that's a very tough act to follow.
Yeah, where's your toys?
This is kind of dry. But what I wanted to do is just basically tell you how we went about the audit, give you some ideas of what we do in terms of pictumetize, because part of our job is for you to know, and we did due diligence in terms of trying to conduct the audit appropriately, tell you what we found, which is primarily good stuff, and then give you a couple of insights as to how I think operations run for the year. So what happens usually is we break the job down into two sessions. We come in in the spring, we come in in the fall. Actually, we come in the summer and then the fall. And the idea behind it is that we try not to have all the concentrated work after year end. You can spread it out, we can look at budget, we can look at debt. If there's any single audit testing that has to be done, we can do that in the prelim. And then at year end, we basically come down and bang the heck out of the balance sheet, which for your purposes is very, not really complex. Your balance sheet is very simple. You have cash and receivables and capital assets. And on the liability side, you've got your OPEB, your pension liabilities, your normal accrued salaries, which is the normal teacher's summer pay at year end, and a couple of payables. From a testing standpoint, what we do is we look at four different transaction cycles. We look at the revenue cycle, the expenditure cycle, the payroll cycle, and we also look at journal entries. And we test about 30 of those individually for the various authorizations, whether or not the personnel folder has the correct pay in it, whether or not the invoice was properly approved, whether the revenue was actually collected, turned over, and posted correctly. And what I can share with you, all that testing lets me believe that this system as designed, which you understand how it's working, is in fact working that way. Now, that's about 120 transactions. I can't tell you how many hundreds or thousands of transactions you probably have, but it's the way we go about doing it to get an assessment. And our assessment was fine. When we come in on a year end, we do that which is called substantive testing. So we look at cash, capital assets, OPEB, pension liabilities, accrued vacation pay and sick pay, and then debt. Just to give you some round numbers, at the end of the year, you had $10 million in cash. Your capital assets were just under $19 million. The pay two biggest guys on your balance sheet from a liability standpoint is the OPEB liability and the pension liability. They're significant, they're close to $40 million in total.
Can you, can you, can I?
Anytime.
So our OPEB liability shifts each year?
It usually increases each year.
I thought it went down.
It could go down if you had a design change in your plan and the next actuary took that into account. But the OPEB liability had a $2.5 million increase between 15 and 16.
So what's the total OPEB liability right now?
Right now it's $26.1 million.
But the actuary reports about $40 million, so there's an accounting difference between that. Just about the style of reporting that will change in the next several years, which he'll describe.
Okay, you're gonna have to.
There's a Gatsby coming down the road that in '18 is gonna basically treat the OPEB liability like the pension liability. I'll explain that just a tad later. Because right now the accounting part is correct, it's just it recognizes full funding. What it recognizes is the portion you should have funded that didn't put in, that you didn't put in. That's how, why it's only $26 million and not the total unfunded liability. And then you have some debt, small debt of $4.9 million. In addition to what I call banging the heck out of the balance sheet, we perform analytics. You have a budget-to-actual statement, which we look at the expectations of revenues collected versus the actuals collected. We look at the expectations of appropriations to be spent versus the actual to be spent. And those tell us if there's any additional testing we might have to do, because we're looking for anomalies. We really didn't see any. Actually, our budget over several years has been fairly consistent, year to year. I think we budgeted about $49 million right now. And we didn't find anything that was unusual. From a standpoint of looking at the budget, my comments are the revenue estimates are reasonable and the appropriation levels are realistic. You know, some of your communities, I know there's always a give and take of trying to generate revenue to provide the programmatic services you want. And then dealing with things like the pension liability and the OPEB liability, which have nothing to do with the programmatic side, but eat into the budget. So that's my walk away from FY '16 operations, you did pretty good. There's another thing I'd always like to mention, and I think it's worthwhile, is I call it audit readiness. As auditors, we try to come in and go as fast as we possibly can. I think for two reasons. One is they don't want us hanging around too long. And secondly is that, you know, as a business, you've got to have efficiencies in what you do. We know how to audit, and we've actually developed over the years a great system of going to do it. But if a client's not ready when we walk in the door, we are bogged down. And I'd like to suggest or share with you, and this has been consistent, your business office is ready. You know, they come in, they give us a pile of stuff, we can sift through the pile, we know what we're getting. Every year we come in, we ask a couple of questions we didn't ask the year before, answered correctly, answered time, we've got us the information we needed. I didn't encounter any issues in trying to do what we have to do to provide you with the opinion on these reports.
Is your interface, Pat?
Yes, primarily.
Well, Pat deserves kudos for that, so thank you for recognizing her.
She has been there for a long time, and she did a yeoman's work again. So we appreciate that. The audit opinion itself, there's 54 pages in the report, we own two. It's called the opinion. It's the first two pages of the report, which lists out a whole bunch of stuff, from this is what we did, this is how we did it, this is the way we did it in conformance with. But the bottom line is you received an unmodified opinion, which in layman's terms is a clean opinion. It means there's nothing that you can't get any better when it comes to financial statements that are put forward by GAAP and Gatsby. The other thing I'd like to share with you is during our audit work, we look at a lot of things. And sometimes with some clients, we come up with adjustments that need to be made to your books in order to make the financial statements right. That did not occur. Which means to me, and I'm not really familiar with the intermediate information you get on a regular basis, but that tells me that what you're getting, you can rely on, because it was right at year end. And we don't just look at year end, we look at various processes during the year. So I just wanted to share that with you. I'm a little bit late with you this year, because, you know, we had... The OPEB report had to come out, and it came out a little later than we anticipated. And I can't look behind the door, we had those stupid loans that came up that we had to deal with, and I had to wait for that to flush itself out before I could issue the reports.
Yeah, we think that, we feel the same way. You said it, not me.
No, no, hey, it's the way, that's the way, it happens. You know, I don't know, it's not told to me.
Understood.
If it's not told to me, and it's buried in some line item, I mean, it was $54,000 in total year end. That's seven one-hundreds of a percent of your total liabilities. That's seven tenths of a percent of your total debt. Not gonna happen unless I fall over it, or somebody tells me to look over there. It's not gonna be fine. Back to the general fund, though. Overall, operations were a little better than anticipated. Your revenues came in about $577,000, higher because of three things. Transportation money, emergency management money, which is left over from a grant that you got, and Medicaid, which came in higher than normal too. So combined, that was $577,000. Expenditures came in about 99% of what you budgeted. You carried over, or you underspent by about a million bucks. On a $49 million budget, if you're gonna grade yourself, you almost got an A+. Maybe you did get an A+, I don't know what an A+ really is, it's 198. We had to make a couple of restatements to the financial statements. One was primarily due to that unreported debt. Because what, it happens is the beginning balances had to be shown as if they did exist at the beginning of the year, and then we take care of the inter-period adjustments. That helped, that hurt. Another financial thing that I think was great is you earmarked about $150,000 for OPEB. I don't think you adopted the trust, at least you hadn't as of June 30th, but your idea was to commit that $150. And that's shown as a component of your fund balance in what's called committed. I think it's a great step in the right direction, because this is a liability that's not gonna go away. It's real.
When are we gonna, when are you gonna talk more about that?
I'm almost finished.
Oh, no, 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 I don't want to rush you.
And then on debt, the big thing there, you had a refunding. You issued $3.1 million worth of refunding, which is like refinancing your house. It'll save $285,000 over the remainder of the debt service years, which is pretty good. So from a financial statement perspective, you, you're... If I put three or four years of your operations right in front of me, they all are very similar. Because, you know, you're dealing with the same issues from a budget standpoint, you're dealing with the same issues from a revenue standpoint. You know, overall, I think the internal control is good. I mean, I'm upset that I felt the fact that these loans popped up, but there's nothing I could do about it.
Well, I think it's only fair to share that when, I mean, this is my layman's understanding. An annual audit is a cursory review. You're looking at, you're not doing a forensic audit. They're two completely different areas.
We're not as high as $30,000, but we're not on the deck, if you know what I mean, in terms of what we're looking at. I mean, you know, when I look at, and again, when we come in, we kind of assess risk. So when I think about the pie of expenditures of the regional school district, the number one thing is personnel and personnel-related costs. You guys are all over that stuff. I mean, you know it to the penny, what teachers are making, what aides are making, what everybody's making. Then you throw on top of that health benefits, personnel-related. Then you throw on top of that maybe some of the stipends that go out. So when you really look at the picture, so much of your expenditures are personnel-related. Then you have debt. Then you have utilities. And after that, you've got a little portion left over that is not allowed.
We're trying to do something, some programming, Lynn.
You know, go buy a mower.
That was a bonnet contention, but okay.
Still, you follow what I'm saying? So I appreciate you saying that, because as an auditor, we're not supposed to catch fraud. And I'm not gonna say it was fraud, let me step back from that, that was the wrong word. We're not supposed to catch everything. And again, if we don't know about it, and it's not made aware of us, we know how to handle it if we made aware of it, and we weren't aware of it. So that's the financial statements. I'm gonna do one quick thing on the federal awards, and then I'm gonna talk about the management. Which is gonna take up the OPEB piece. On the federal awards, what it is, you have to, we do an A133 audit, or actually it's called Uniform Guidance Audit, for all your federal grants, because you spend more than $750,000. You've spent a total of $1.5 million, and of that, special education was $832,000, which makes it a major grant, and it's what we test, okay? And what we tested for, we tested for compliance, we tested for authorization of expenditures, meaning are these appropriately being charged to the grant? There's some certifications we look at for teachers, where they're, in terms of are they actually applying, working on this Fed program? Our test results resulted in three things. There were no findings, there were no questions asked. And the three reports embedded in this federal document were all unmodified reports, too, again, the best you can get for that. And then on the management letter, the, you've got no internal controls, that I can tell. I mean, we were fortunate enough to be here for a long period of time, and there was a time, in fact, I don't think any of you folks were here, that the management letters were, could be significant. There were areas that we believed should be moved upon and fixed. They were, I mean, every time we kind of came up with a management letter comment, this goes back to the deficit borrowing that we had way back when, you know, things got a little messed up. You know, when Pat came on board, she began a process of picking and choosing, can't do it all at once, of making things better. And that's why this management letter is thin, and I always say thin to win, because that means you're okay. Now, in there is something called a reminder of future Gaspys. And it's Gatsby '74 and '75. And what that is, is it relates to the new OPEB law that's coming up. So I think Mr. Jones mentioned the $46 million overall liability for the OPEB. I can't remember, I have to look at the financial statements. And you only got $26 million showing in the financial statements. What they're gonna do in FY '18 is they're gonna say, what's your unfunded liability? They're gonna scrape all this accounting we've been doing since, well, maybe the last 10 years, and throw it away, and bring it on and put that $46 million liability on our balance sheet. So in addition to having $11.1 million pension liability, you're gonna have another $46 million OPEB liability. And the scarier thing about the OPEB versus the pension, quite honestly, is in Massachusetts, you're required to fund your pension in accordance with the law. And you can pick a date certain, whether it be 2028 or 2040, or somewhere in between, that says, I have to make this appropriation, I have to pay this. There's no law for OPEB. It's just there.
What are they gonna do?
Well, and the real bad part about OPEB is unlike the retirement systems, where they can make a reasonable estimate of increasing in salary tax, they can make a reasonable estimate on investment returns, they cannot make a reasonable estimate on the cost of healthcare. It's a variable that's too obtuse to really get your answer on. They try, you know, they say 5.5% going down to this, or 7.5 and then going down to 5. Who knows? You know, so that's probably the biggest issue, I would say, facing all our clients. Because, I mean, you have a $46 million liability, the city laws has a $500 million liability.
Who? City law?
You know, so it runs the gamut, the issues are the same, how we're gonna do it, you know?
So how are other districts doing with their funding structure and strategy?
Basically, I've seen most of the school districts. It's funny, some of the cities and towns have been a little bit more aggressive, and I think I know why. But the school districts are doing something like you. I mean, I got a school district out in the West who's just trying to get, he wants $450,000, well, settle for $50,000, because they can't get the communities to do it. Now, the communities are doing it, but somehow the school district is, you know, doesn't have the same problems, but it does. It's the exact same thing. So, you know, I guess the best way for me to explain it to you is that it can't be ignored. I don't know how you're supposed to go about getting into the budget, to be honest with you. I mean, because, I mean, what I've known about all school districts, whether you're regional or whether you're a district within a town or city, you guys focus on the programmatic side. That's where your attention goes, all right? And the finances, while they're very important, most of the time, if everything's fine, nobody talks about them, if everything gets bad, then they get talked about, all right? But for the most part, you try to take care of what you can. And it's difficult. I can understand the difficulty of trying to carve out something for this unknown, you know, this liability that's hanging out there, that doesn't seem to have the tangibleness of a teacher before a kid. I get it. But I will tell you this, this liability is as tangible as that. We talked about the pie before, okay? Well, let's just say the OPEB is like this, and it's just gonna keep going like this and this and this, and what's gonna happen? You're gonna get to squeeze someone else. So somebody's gonna have to say, you gotta do something. And it could be funding it, it could be design change, or a combination of both. And that's what I envision, long after I'm not doing this anymore. That's what I envision.
Design change of the current healthcare. Well, that's one of the things we're gonna be looking at this year, is looking into the healthcare plans. But also, I think those of us who've been on the school committee are uncomfortable about OPEB.
You should be, I think you should be.
And I would say that...
Well, can I just say something? I heard a comment the other day at a board meeting, it was something like this. It's the Gatsby thing. It's not, it's really...
It's a liability.
It's really...
It's a responsibility.
It's really, yes, based on what you're doing today, and if you're gonna continue to do it into the future.
Well, and I think your points are, I have a couple of questions that I want to ask. Does anybody have any questions before I jump in? Our new folk? Susan, Mark? Mark, you, oh, you probably.
Well, Mark was at our meeting that we went in.
Yeah, Mark knows all this stuff.
Let me ask some leading questions.
So, a couple of questions. With the forensic reports that went on, and I, and I think we all understand the function and the roles, so there's... and the roles, so there's no issue there for, from us. What can be done to mitigate issues like the loans, testing for it? How do we?
See, you know what? The thing is, you look at, let's say, an eighteen thousand nine hundred dollar loan, I forget which one it was, but it was one of the balances at the end of the year. That payment is probably seven hundred dollars a month, or something like that.
Yeah, which is...
You have to catch it.
Not even...
And it's either buried in a rental line, it's buried in a technology line, it's buried in a maintenance line, you know? So what I would say to you is, and I don't know, I actually don't know particularly if the board might have tacitly not known to approve one of these loans, is maybe you could educate yourself somehow on some of the NGLs that relates to some of the finances. Like when, a lot of selectmen that go, the DOR has this class, it's almost like one of those books, you know, Finances for Dummies, Municipal Finances for Dummies, you might wanna just educate yourself a little bit about that. And I would also, you know, obviously, and you probably have the policies, I don't know, is you have to understand the difference between lease and loan.
Yeah.
Because leases do not require the town to authorize the borrowing, but loans do. There happens, it has to be an authorization, and then there has to be an approval by the school committee, and then the treasurer can go out and borrow. And that did not happen. That was the biggest piece that was missing. From my, from way I look at it. I read some of the legal letter that, you know, I tend to disagree with it from an accounting standpoint, but not maybe from this legal standpoint. I know that I would say most of our clients who enter into regular leases do not go, the committee's approval, but they don't have to go before the town for authorization. But a loan, these two loans, there's no doubt about what they are, and what they were, and what was required, and wanted to enter into them.
Well, I think we, I think, you know, I think the superintendent came in, and we all learned what was there together. So, yeah, that was an education.
So I don't really answer to your question. I think, you know, if we were doing our transaction testing, we'd probably have to get lucky.
That makes sense.
You'd have to get, you'd have to pick a selection, say, what's this? What do you mean, what do you mean it's a payment to Clinton Bank? For what? You know, that type of thing. I think you'd have to get lucky.
And then another question I have for you is, we're looking at, talking about, finance subcommittee will be talking about this. We don't currently, and this is not a criticism to anyone, but as this year has gone on, a lot has changed in this district, and the financial controls have been put in place at the administrative level. But the question I have is, which reports, regular reports, would you suggest that we, that we work with the administration on, that we have on a regular basis, in order to keep ourselves informed, without creating a monstrosity of an event for the administration?
I have to see the reports that come out, but I do see it's about a, if I ask you how many pages was your budget to actual, what would you tell me?
About eight, nine.
Yeah. To me, the critical element that you're paying attention to is not necessarily the receipts coming in, because ninety-eight point nine percent of what you get of the state are the member communities. The budget to actual report, to me, is what I use to determine if controls are in place. And what it shows you is the appropriation, any revision of the appropriations, any appropriation, expenditures, the balance and occurrences. And that, to me, is what I would pay a lot of attention to. The other thing I've seen done in a couple of communities, not necessarily a school district, but some, just to maybe flag some things, as you know, you're approving the warrants, somebody might say, you put a threshold, anything over ten thousand dollars you wanna know about above, versus just signing off the warrant. So you can say, what's that expenditure for?
Well, that's a good idea.
You know, pick up, pick up whatever, to me, I call it risk tolerance, whatever you think the risk is. The only thing I would say is, don't try to kill Pat with the information, but sometimes, like, I'll see there's a letter come, and they'll say there's five bills in here that are over ten thousand dollars.
Or five.
Huh?
Or five.
Or five, yeah. Or whatever it is.
Right.
I mean, you've got a, you know, again, the payroll's the payroll. So, you know, the big expenditures for you are going to be things that you should know about, but maybe this would be a way of highlighting it a little bit more, and see if that might give you some little additional comfort level that you might be asking for. Without, you know the saying, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater? Be prudent how you react to what happened. That's what I would say to you. Be prudent. And again, I wasn't kidding, it was seven one-hundredths of a percent of the debt, I mean, of your total liabilities. So I'm saying to myself, this is not something that I would, you know, just turn things over to make them happen, because for the most part, I think what's happening for you is what you're wanting.
I think, I think, you know, you gotta look for the positive in it all, but I think that, you know, in a way, we have learned an awful lot. I think as a, as a school committee, we need to be crisp on what it is that we're looking for, and to your point, not boil the ocean. Because there was, there was an unbelievable fear factor when all this was happening. We did not know how deep and why. And kudos to the superintendent, Pat, and I know that you worked with John Solomon.
John, yep.
Hand in hand, he said nothing but positive things. And frankly, I know that you've served this district for over ten years.
Oh, yeah. I think it may be a little more than that.
It may be, but we appreciate the way you've always come to us in a very professional, supportive manner, and scare the heck out of us about OPEB, and I promise you, by the time the school year starts, we will have had a straw man of a strategy. I just said that on camera.
You do. I won't keep you, but some of the strategies I've seen, in a municipality, they call it free cash.
Yeah.
And they'll say, we will take X percent of our free cash and throw it at OPEB. You guys have E and D.
Right.
And you might wanna say something like that. Oh, to get back to what I was saying before, when you asked, how are other folks doing? Some of the, the cities and towns are on strap with a five percent limit. They, I mean, some of our triple-A communities have thirty percent of reserves. So they're actually, they have, they have capital plans, OPEB plans, compensated absence plans embedded in how free cash is to be allocated. So it's not unusual to see somebody in those communities do well. That five percent is a killer for you, because it gives you so little wiggle room, but it's a thought to me, that if you have some E and D, I call it, spend one-time money, which is E and D, on something that's one-time. Meaning that you can find, you can fund OPEB this year, but maybe not next year, versus a salary which...
Use it for what it's intended.
Kind of.
Exactly. And I think that's how we got to the one fifty, right? A couple of years ago? Because we had excess from a healthcare line item.
Yep.
And it was, we'll just put it into OPEB. And do I wanna make sure that folks understand what Mr. Solomon's talking about when he talks about the five percent? So, and if I get this wrong, correct me. So this is a test, again, on camera. A school district can only have five percent cash.
Reserves.
In their reserves. How about that? Let's compromise.
Cash is a little different, but in what we call your fund balance, your general fund, unreserved fund balance.
To use, right.
Which can technically be used for anything. It cannot exceed five percent of the appropriation.
So five percent of our budget is not big, and in the past, that five percent...
Two point five million dollars.
Pardon?
It's only two point five million dollars.
Exactly. So when you think about it that way, plus it was also being used in a funky kind of way, we were kind of moving...
Well, you did use, like, for instance, in this financial system, it shows that you used a million dollars to balance this year's budget.
Yeah, right. That's right.
You know, so...
So we've got a, so it's gonna take us some time to structure, restructure that. But with that money, it is kind of almost an insurance policy, almost for us, if there is an issue, or something that comes up, and if, you know, if you use it, and if you use it, then you don't have it, so it's a whole conversation, but that's what Mr. Solomon's talking about, is we're constrained by that amount, whereas cities and towns don't have that constraint.
And all our decent folks, I mean, I'd say, have a fourteen to thirty-two percent hedge, that have those types of reserves.
So that's why Mark keeps pushing me. But anyway, do you have questions?
I do have one question. On the eventual mandate that, for the Government Accounting Standards Board's changes in future years, is there anything in particular preventing us from applying those mandates ahead of the deadline, doing them for, say, fiscal year twenty seventeen, instead of waiting until they're mandated in twenty eighteen?
The answer is yes. However, we are, we are very seriously, and our clients take us seriously, not recommending not to do it, because number one, you'd be the only one to do it. There's absolutely no precedent on how to do this. The instruction manual on how to implement this hasn't come out. The actuaries aren't really on board yet with a hundred percent of how to do it. So while the flat answer is yes, our strong recommendation is, don't think about it. Because you didn't realize it, but when we implemented GASB sixty-eight, our firm had twenty-four firms in our conference room trying to figure out how to do it. And even internally, we probably went through five or six iterations ourself before we found that that's it. This is gonna, now, we do have the history of dealing with GASB sixty-eight, but there are some nuances relative to GASB seventy-four, seventy-five, that sixty-eight doesn't have. So we anticipate to have the same complication in terms of its implementation.
Thank you.
One, debt.
Debt.
How do we keep on top of the debt? Because some of this debt goes back to two thousand, because we're still paying off the, I mean, how do we...
I think we're on schedules, right?
Well, you do, you have a bunch of schedules, and just to let you know, I mean, the way it's really looked at, if you wanna look at it, take a look at page thirty-one of your financial statements. This shows the debt you have going out to two thousand twenty-eight. And it's basically two significant notes. Throw away the Clinton ones for a second, you've got the refunding note, and then you got the athletic field renovations that you did. The deficit note died about four, five years ago, but it shows from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-eight, what we call your out-year payment time.
You seeing it?
Yeah. So high school drops to twenty twenty-six, and then you have the athletic field after that.
So when is the, so can you, just looking at that, can you tell me when, because this is a question I have, when we're looking at possibly taking on large capital projects, I wanna understand where we're at right now, as far as when we're paying things off?
It looks like we finished paying for the renovation in twenty twenty-five.
For the, the addition of the high school?
Yeah. And then we finished the fields in twenty twenty-eight. And that's half a million dollars.
Okay. All right. So, thank you. Okay, any other last quick questions? Mr. Solomon?
It's my pleasure.
Thank you. We do appreciate it, and thank you for your, Pat's always had very positive things to say about the interaction and support.
My pleasure. Take care now. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. And now Pat's gonna share, she's not, she thinks she's going back to her chair, but she's...
No, I'm just getting my note.
Quarterly reports and a technology update, right?
Yes, that's right. She's just gonna give you an idea of where we're at with the technology audit, and what's happening with that. And actually, she's gonna kind of do exactly what he said you would be doing, in talking about the projected and the actual, so go ahead, Pat. By the way, Pat, special thanks to you. I think it was really special to have him give so many positive commendations to you in your office, and I don't wanna lose sight of that. That was, that was really, really comforting, welcoming, it was just, it was fabulous to hear, and just really appreciate the work your office does. Thanks.
Thank you. So I'm presenting tonight the results of operation as of three thirty-one seventeen. Okay, this is where we are. I've condensed each one of our sites, so that you can see everything in summary. And as you can, if I go down the list, I don't wanna read every single one of them, but if you have any questions on any particular one, I can give you some answers, so I'll put that out. Looks like we are, at this point, looks like we're gonna have about two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars left at the end of the year, and I wanna add some caution on that. We estimate utility bills, we estimate construction costs, we have a lot of projects this spring that are going on, and we hope to be able to stay within our estimates, so...
So is this to the end of June, or till August?
This is to the end of, this is, the projection is until the end of June. So this would have all of our salaries, everything. So does anybody have any questions about any particular line?
So you put a, Brooke, you've kind of stemmed the spending.
Right, we froze the budget in, for several weeks.
Right.
And we continue, well, we, Pat continues to say no, because we continue to get people that are trying to push things through, and Pat resolutely says no. However, there are some things where we just, we can't, like, it's just business, daily stuff that, or facilities, things that we can do now that we can't do during the winter. So there are things like that, but the bottom line is, everything runs through her office right now, and basically through Pat, to say yes or no?
So basically, yeah, I've said to them that there's no more spending that isn't essential, you know, for everyday classroom activities. We don't want any of that good stuff to stop. But I've also estimated some additional costs in this number, just in case, because I know, because historically, things come up. And I've looked back at previous years and seen a few things, and have had some questions, but I put some, you know, estimated expenditures in there to cover a little bit of that, and I'm hoping that we land pretty close to this number. Does anybody have any questions about any particular line or anything?
You could go through, and then if they have anything that we can, they might wanna come back to.
Okay, sure. And this is what I'm projecting for revenue at year-end. We don't have any final Medicaid, you know, figures. Sometimes we get a little bump at the end, and that number of sixty-eight thousand as a surplus could be a little bit higher, if we do get another bump at the year-end. This, I'm projecting regional transportation to be up about forty-two thousand, and again, the numbers aren't final yet, so we're still waiting for those. So that's about, like, this surplus will go into E and D at year-end, so...
Are those the two areas where it, we're kind of unsure right now?
Yes, those two areas. Like, we may get some more Medicaid revenue. The chapter, the charter school revenue might be a little bit different, sometimes there's some last-minute changes to that, but this is basically where we're gonna land. And then I wanted to talk to you about regional transportation, the regional transportation reimbursement fund. At the end of two thousand sixteen, we put two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars into this fund, and basically, if you read through all of this, the state has allowed us to establish a regional transportation reimbursement fund, and we did that in June of two thousand fifteen.
What's the purpose of the fund, so people understand?
The purpose of the fund is to be able to take excess regional transportation reimbursement, and be able to use that for transportation, if we need that money in our budget.
And that's where she's gonna go in a minute.
And that's where I'm going from here. What I'd like to say is that I think that we should allocate some of our transportation expenditures to this regional transportation fund for this year. It will give the appearance of the balance being four hundred and thousand or so, but ultimately, the money would end up in the same place anyway. And the reason why I wanna do it this way is because I don't wanna have that last-minute meeting on June seventh, or June twenty-first, saying, you know, this happened, you know, this is gonna cost us this, we're not gonna make that two hundred and thirteen thousand. I just, I just want the safety of that, and it makes sense.
And I think in light of this, this particular year, I mean, Pat and I've had many discussions on this, and, you know, the fact that we paid off all those loans this year, as, you know, we did all the forensic audit, things that we needed to do, that's all in, that's all in here. We just see this as a little safety measure right now. We can do this, we should do this, and so we're coming forward tonight saying, we'd And so, we're coming forward tonight saying, we'd like to do this.
Yes.
So, how does this-
Is this because we don't know what the reimbursement is from year to year? Whether- because we can't charge for transportation because we're district. So, is this because of that district?
I think this is just-
But we have to estimate-
Right?
They come out with what the numbers are gonna be for regional transportation. And every year, they scare us and say, oh, it's gonna be low. They're gonna cut regional transportation. So, we have to aim low when we estimate that. So, last year, we had the benefit of getting an excess amount of $216,000. And we were allowed- because we had established this Regional Transportation Fund, we were allowed to put that money in there. Now, we have to spend that money in this year.
In the school year.
Otherwise, it goes back to E- it goes back to E and D anyway. So, if it's in that Regional Transportation Fund or it's in our regular budget, it doesn't really matter. It's all going to the same place anyway.
So, what are we spending it on? If it has to be spent this year?
Transportation.
The transportation. It would be going right against the transportation line. That's all it is.
That's all it is. So, but ultimately, if- I don't plan to spend anything more than what I've estimated. And so, the money would end up ultimately in E and D.
So, is this $216,000, the money that we received this year?
Last year.
True, yeah, last year.
2016 has to be spent in 2017.
Which is our year.
Which is where we are now.
So, we haven't received this year's yet?
Well, no, we are receiving that now. And I had, if you- if I go back a couple, I'm projecting that maybe we will have $42,000 to put into that for next year.
That's all the state's giving us?
Which is a lot less.
Well, we have- we can do- we can do this every year. We can just set aside that amount of money into there. And again, we would have the ability to transfer that money back in-
But I'm confused. So, we got $213,000 last year and only getting $40,000 this year?
It's a surplus.
Right.
More than expected.
More- right. We estimated that we were gonna get $950,000. It looks like we're gonna get $992,000.
Okay.
So, $992,000 include the $216,000 that you hope to transfer? Or will that increase that amount?
No, this is revenue.
That's totally separate.
Totally separate. It's complex in the fact that we can only charge transportation expenditures to that revolving fund.
I understand. So, does that mean that because of transferring the money out of the revolving fund, there will be some leftover in the transportation fund for this current year that we may be able to put into our revolving fund at the end of this year?
No, we can't leave any of it.
So, it would go to E and D?
It has to go to E and D.
And that's the 68?
And so, and then if this came to light, we would then decide whether or not we want that $42,000 to be the new number that we would have to spend in this one year '18. And this- this just helps us for when we're negotiating new contracts. This will actually help us for next year.
We're not negotiating next year though, right?
No, we have a three-year contract. So, that's why it was put in place.
So, are you looking for something from us?
Yes, I do need your approval to do that. So, if you care to do that tonight, that would be great.
So, I need you to state exactly what you would like us to do.
I would like to make a motion that the $216,000-
$932.
$932 in Regional Transportation Revolve- Reimbursement Fund be used for Regional Transportation Expenditures from fiscal year '17.
Does somebody want to move that motion on the school committee?
Yes, I saw move that we take $216,932 from the Regional Transportation Reimbursement Fund, revolving fund, and use it in the current fiscal year for expenditures.
For transportation expenditures?
Yes.
Yes.
And what would those be?
Just wait a second. Let's finish up this. Does anyone have a second?
Second.
Second. All right. So, I know who's gonna- now you have questions.
So, what would those be?
What was what?
Well, we've got our transportation budget.
Right.
So, do we come in under budget?
So.
Because I'm just wondering what transportation expenditures we'd have that are worth $213,000 or $216,000 between the end of the year.
Yes, we would come under budget on that line.
So, we're definitely under budget for transportation due to our contract and-
Right, and that would increase the available balance at the end.
Any comments from-
So, at the year-end, what is your likely proposal for what will go into the revolving fund? Or is it your thought that whatever funds that we don't need coming from the state will go automatically into that revolving fund?
Yes.
And will you need us to act for that moment to put it into the fund?
Is that another vote?
Yes, we will need a vote for that as well.
But that's the intent.
That's the intent.
So, when would you need that?
And that money will be reserved in case, for example, next year, the legislature or the governor decides to reduce the amount of funds available in transportation, which is annually threatened when the Massachusetts government has their budget adjustments in the spring. That this is- this is exactly the purpose of that fund.
So, we have a motion and a second. Yes, thank you very much. All is in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you. So, what- so, to Mark's point, do we need you to come back to us? And at what point do we need you to come back to us? Because we've only got two meetings left this year.
I will probably have a better idea what that number is going to be by the first- the meeting in June.
June 7?
Yes.
So, Alita, can you put that on for us? I just want to make sure it's placeholder, because otherwise, Mr. Jones will hound me. But good point. All right, anything else on that?
Who is it?
June 7.4. It's for Regional Transportation Reimbursement Fund.
And any- anything else that you might need from us, Pat?
No.
Anything else you would need from us on that?
Not on the quarterly. This is all I have to report on.
Okay.
So, the next thing that you wanted me to mention was a technology audit. I'll give you an update on that. We have made arrangements with Wally Computer to have them come in and do a technology audit as a test site at the Hail School. And what they're going to do is audit at no charge. And we have this opportunity to decide, is this actually what we want? Is this what we're trying to get from our- an actual physical audit of technology? So, basically, what's happening is a survey is going out to the teachers. And they have to- it's a very short survey, and it has some general questions about things that are beyond the things that we are already inventorying. And so, we'll be able to collect some additional data. They have agreed to charge us an hourly rate, which is in compliance with our- with the state contract.
Wait a second, they're charging us an hourly rate, but they're doing it for free?
Let me finish that. So, we're gonna have two people in the building. And the process takes two days. The two people come into the building and look at overheads and everything else and determine what's in each classroom. And then they will do a report. They'll compile a report, and they'll compare everything and come up with something that we can look at and decide whether or not we want to use them. We need two weeks' lead time after they've done the inventory before they can produce this report. And if we decide that we want to use them for the other schools, we estimate that the cost will be about $10,000. And they will then charge us for the Hail School.
Oh, so it's okay.
So, but if we don't want to do this, we have the option. If what they produce isn't what we're looking for, then we can just scrap the whole thing. We don't owe them anything.
So, one of the things, and I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but Elise's background is similar to this. I would love for Elise to maybe have a conversation with you.
Sure.
Elise, do you want to tell folks what you do and your background?
Sure. I am a senior researcher at American Institutes for Research in my day job. And what I do is work with schools and districts around technology implementation, mostly funded by the Department of Education, projects. So, I was listening with a lot of interest. I'm like, ooh, I've done technology audits. And we've developed tools to help schools and districts do technology audits that are all free because we're funded by the Department of Education, those projects. So, yeah, I'd be happy to talk with you and answer any questions or, you know, help in any way I could.
My question is, do we know what we want to audit and the depth of it? And I don't- I don't know that there was an articulation of that. So, I don't want- I would hate for these people to go in and do this awesome, groovy, cool thing, and then us go, well, what about this? Or what about- without boiling the ocean? Because that's gonna be my new catchphrase, everybody, for FY '17, '18. If we're not boiling the ocean-
Not boiling the ocean.
I'm getting a water gun.
Pardon?
I'm getting a water gun.
You're getting a water gun. But, you know, are they looking at- are they looking at hardware? Are they looking at software? Are they looking- what are they- are they looking at connectivity? I don't even know.
Everything.
Oh.
They're going into the closet, the network closets, looking at, you know, whatever components. I'm not all that familiar with the terms for all of that equipment. But that's what we expect from them.
So, Elise, so without- I'm not asking you to commit anything. I'm just- I want to understand what you're thinking. We have a technology committee, which may be separate from this effort.
Yeah, it really is totally separate.
It is separate.
Not connected at all.
So, I don't want to force the school committee into your world. But I would love when you have something, if you would consider just passing it by folks. And especially, I'd just like to get your take on it, because you may be able to translate to us. Is that- is that okay? And we could talk about what that is so that we are respectful of the boundaries, but still get some of the information.
Lynn, just two questions. Why did they pick Hail? Just curious.
The smallest.
The smallest, okay. And are they doing internet and wind? Because the high school's a bottleneck. And so, I'm just wondering, are they- are they testing any of it?
This is- they're not testing the equipment. They are inventorying it.
They are.
There are barcodes on each piece of equipment. And to tell you the truth, in conversation, you know, you were asking about how deep are we gonna go? Are we gonna get, you know, is it just the hardware? What about the things that are $150, $200? You know, digital cameras, all kinds of things like that. Yes, we're gonna do that, but we're going to do it at a school level because that is so- the amount of labor involved in that is so much more than this scope of the audit.
So, this, I think- I think I know where you're going. So, what you're auditing is physical inventory.
Exactly.
Okay, so it's not- it's not connectivity? So, that- or is it?
It is. Because as far as the network servers, is that connectivity? Is it- whatever's hanging in the ceiling so that the kids can use Wi-Fi?
Everything goes back to the high school. So, you're only as fast as your slowest link?
Right.
And it-
But, Lynn, I think what's-
They're just taking pieces, which is- which is fine.
But for this effort, okay? Again, we're looking at- we're looking at a pond.
Yep.
For this effort, they're gonna do what they need to do here. And where- I mean, it's gonna stop once at least the building.
It's not gonna leave the building.
So, once- once we see what it is that they're willing to do, if we like it, if it's something that you guys, you know, there's a recommendation to do it.
We actually need- I mean, you probably have the same school. But you probably need it for all the schools?
We do need it for all the schools. And we estimate that the total cost would be about $10,000 for all schools.
All right, so let's see what they come back with.
I think that's really one aspect. You know, again, keep in mind where this all started from and how we've gotten to where we've gotten and why we've gotten here. So, I think that we really need to see what they come up with, what this looks like, and then make a decision. Is this enough? Is it not enough? Is this- is this looking at the things that we want them to look for? So, you know, I think we want to be cautious here with it. And we just- yeah, and I'm just really excited that we're testing the water with this. And but, I mean, we've run up against all kinds of things in this process. Like, do we do this after school? No, we can't do that. Do we do this during the summer? No, we can't do that. Because, you know, teachers take stuff home, or they're working on it. We need to do it during the school day. Well, what does that look like? So, really, this is just dipping the toe in the water to see, can we do this? And what is this gonna look like?
Well, yeah, is it gonna give us value?
When are they doing it? Like, what is happening?
Well, they're doing Hail.
Like, right now?
Probably next week.
So, are they recorded and everything?
Okay, Lynn, we're now around home. Now, we're out in Atlanta. Nick, is it a quick one? Because we gotta move.
You mentioned teacher surveys. Will there also be student surveys?
No, this is a survey of what they have for- what they have for hardware in their classroom. So, it wouldn't be a student-based.
Oh, I thought it was like how well it worked.
No, no.
No, we're just looking for inventory, that's all.
So, do you need something from us on this?
No, I just wanted to give you an update on that.
Brooke says no.
We're done.
All right, Pat, thank you so much. All right. And now we have two guests that have been graciously, patiently waiting. Extended Day and School Nutrition Report. Out of best chicken salad sandwiches in the region. Come out of Neshoba Regional School District Food Services Department. And you didn't bring any. Until I let you-
Sure. Who's gonna be going first?
Tom's gonna go first.
Yes.
So, I'm gonna turn it over to Pat, who helps to oversee these two particular programs. You know, for our new school committee members, if you haven't met Tom Hool yet or Laura Dwyer, that's who's sitting in front of you. Tom Hool oversees our food services program, and Laura Dwyer oversees our extended day program. So, these are district-wide programs, clearly. I'm excited about what they're gonna present tonight, just for the sake of an update. This is really dissemination of information again this evening, just to give you a flavor of how things have been for the year. So, Pat, do you want to kind of tee it up any more than that?
Well, I think Tom's gonna give you a presentation about what's been going on this year and how the school nutrition program is doing and-
And his new software. Make sure that he has that.
I want to jump in real quick, because, Tom, that was the reason we had asked you to come, is because we went ahead and did the Mosaic program. And we were having a problem with collecting unpaid balances. And that was one of the things that Mosaic was gonna help us with. So, I think that's one of the key questions we're looking at is, vis-à-vis last year, where are we?
Well, I think there are other things too that will come out tonight as we kind of look through this, at what Mosaic is helping us with.
That would be great.
So, yeah.
And it's all in here.
It's- yeah, it's all in.
Okay. You're on.
So, first of all, thank you so much for having me. I have to say, this has been- this is- we're coming to the end of my seventh year, and this has been the most exciting year for the new school nutrition department. We've done so many great things, and we were able to do so many great things through good leadership and support. So, I appreciate that as well. What am I pointing this at? It's always frustrating because you don't know all of them.
On the side, on the side.
Oh, okay.
The batteries are dying, so I think you gotta point it over this way.
Maybe, Alita, if you'll let me go. So, this is a couple of- a few quick pictures of who we are and what we do. Here at Neshoba Regional School Nutrition, we serve- we don't just serve lunch, we serve kids. And we do that by keeping things exciting and interesting. And some of the things we've celebrated at Dr. Seuss's birthday. Down in the bottom right was one of the classes we've had with a group of Girl Scouts, where we had the brownies or daisies, I think it may have been, in our kitchens to earn some badges. And we also have a junior chef program that we started that's in the middle with our extended learning program. As you can see, our staff, some of our staff get real excited about the holidays, or not holidays, but special days that we celebrate, including Dr. Seuss's birthday. Bottom left was an Italian theme meal that we presented. And those are just- I'd like to just quickly mention that those exotic pans there with our spinach and strawberry salad and carrot salad were actually used by Dale, yeah, who runs School Meals That Rock, which is a blog. And she uses those in her presentations across the country. And we were the people who introduced her to those. Dale Hayes, thank you. We're doing some new marketing promotions. We started with a smarter lunchroom training through John Stocker Institute, where they sent some new- a new set of eyes in to look at our program, to help us with some signage and get some new ideas on how to market our program. We, again, initiated the junior chef program. Something very new that we just started within the last couple of weeks. We're working with high school students to begin Stravos and the Deca Club, to begin Facebook and Twitter and Instagram posts, where students will be posting or tweeting our menus daily to other students, so, to, to other students, so they won't have to really be looking for what's, what's for lunch. And Jackie, and I never remember her name either, at the high school. Jackie Carter, thank you, in the journalism class, will be assisting us in putting together a commercial, for lack of a better word, especially for new students who may not know how to go through the lunch line, because we offer so many different things.
I have a quickie for you.
Sure.
Twitter, I know that parents sometimes have a tough time finding the, the menus. Is there a way that parents could sign up for the Twitter accounts, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. We want to get it up to as many people in the district as possible, because the more that know, the better we are. We started a new bulletin board, it's magnetic, where students can use the pens provided and just the napkin to get feedback for creative new menu ideas.
Those are so cute. I've seen them. Yeah, really neat idea.
And the students are being very respectful. We're getting some fantastic ideas, and that we actually are implementing in our menus. A new kind of green campaign is our Trailless Tuesdays. We spoke about the local Girl Scouts. And we're offering, also offering dinners at the district-wide health fair. Laura has a talent show, and she had a mystery dinner, and we're, theater where we provided the dinner, so parents can come in, see what we really do serve for lunch. And the cost is minimal, because the brokers of these companies, Tyson, Barilla, Land of Lakes, these are all name brands that we use, they donated the food to us, to be able to do these. So, the cost is very, very minimal. We're doing some server upgrades in the middle schools, to bring them to a little bit closer to the high school's way of serving. All these, these things that we needed to be able to do that have been purchased this year, and we're just waiting for a little bit of downtime to be able to implement them and get them started. We continue to offer our innovative menus based on the student feedback and the participation we have. And here we are with Mosaic, our new point-of-sale system, and back-of-the-house operation system, and MySchoolBucks online payments. Just quickly, the point-of-sale system is much more user-friendly than our past system, and that is also able to produce in real-time actual reports that make sense, where we don't need to use an adding machine to get the information that school committee may be looking for, or, or Brooke, or Pat especially. When she requests something, we can print it and hand it to her. So, that's really great. Back-of-the-house operation, once it's fully up and running, we're working collaboratively with several other districts to use the information that we all have to build a database, so we can post all of our menu, yeah, dietary guidelines, and, and all those, those neat things, from carbohydrates to grams of sugar and salt. So, as soon as we have that database put together, we'll be able to post that online to answer parents any question, any questions parents may have about the school nutrition. And the MySchoolBucks online payment, you specifically asked on how that's reduced our, our negative balances. We're about half of what we were, a little bit more than half. So, say forty-five percent less than where we were last year, just from this alone. We're also able to generate negative balance letters readily with the push of a key. And Leah and I, who've been working, Leah, for those of you who don't know, is the new part-time administrative person in food service, food and nutrition, who's helping with those types of things, to make sure parents are receiving them on a timely manner, and nobody's getting surprises.
I think, I think we have a really good handle on it this year, and I think a really good process is in place. And everything is real-time, and it's instant, and it makes such a difference.
It, it, it truly does, and we're seeing it. Things we need to look at closely are negative balance policy, that due to, through the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, we need to get acting on. We don't have a formal policy. We have a procedure in this district, and those, we, we're going to be sharing those with.
Do you have examples of?
Yeah. I have it all set and have shared with apps.
It's a, it's a work policy.
So, Susan, you know that's coming.
Yeah, I think that's one of the, I think that might be one of the J policies we haven't looked at. We didn't get all the way through J. Like, it would be in the J. If Mas has one, I think it would be in that section.
Do you think we'll be able to have that before the beginning of next school year?
J, or the whole, the whole manual?
Well, no, no. I, I mean, if, I, I know you have your process, and we'll talk about that at inter-update, but if there's these.
We could pull the one policy out of.
Exactly. It, it sounds like we need to have that ready to go.
It can be amended, if need be, but we, I've put a lot of research and gotten a lot of information from other districts. So, the information that we'll share, I think, I hope it'll be what you're looking for as well.
So, maybe you could kind of jump the line with that one?
Yep.
Okay.
And we're hoping to pilot breakfast program at Center School in FY eighteen, and then hopefully open that up to other schools in the district, with the new initiative where breakfast is counted as time on learning. Programs like breakfast in the classroom, or grab-and-go breakfasts, have worked very well in other districts, and ensures not only that students are receiving a breakfast, because we all know how busy it is in the morning, but we'll also be able to get more funds through the Department of Education and USDA for the more meals that we serve. And then, same for the after-school snack program. We do have in our extended learning program, we have some significant numbers there, and if we're able to provide them with an after-school snack, that doesn't have to be run by the extended learning program, but run by the school nutrition department, we'll be able to increase revenues there, there as well, just through reimbursements, if nothing else.
And where's that at? Is that Hail as well?
The breakfast would be at Center. If I said Hail, I misspoke. And we, we haven't actually decided that yet. It would probably be the school that has the most number of students in the extended learning program in after-school hours.
Now, I'm going to ask you to kind of speed up a little bit.
I'm sorry, I love to talk about some lunch. That's just a menu. You can see those anytime. That's Dale Hayes, that's some of the pictures of what we do. Most of those are at the high school. That's Mosaic, increasing efficiency. I can get you actual reports. That's hard to see, but those are some of the reports in the.
What's the takeaway from that slide? That's, that's, so that's the stuff we're going to want to see? What's the takeaway from that slide, right?
This one's a better one, because we can see that our negative balances are at six thousand one hundred dollars. Our positive balances are at almost eighty-four, with the net balance. We can show you how many breakfasts were served, how many lunches were served as of the end of March thirty-first, and come up with, you know, and then.
And new trends, too.
Right, exactly.
Okay, okay, thank you.
This is a scary thing that could come to fruition. If block grants become real in, with the USDA, that'll affect our reimbursement rates. First of all, it will eliminate any reimbursements on any paid student meals. So, we get, currently get thirty-six cents for each paid meal we serve. Eighty-nine percent of our meals are paid meals, so they're not free or reduced meals, they're fully paid meals. We serve about two hundred lunches a year.
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand, I'm sorry, meals, lunches a year. So, we could stand to lose about sixty-four thousand dollars in paid meal reimbursements, should block grants come to fruition. And that, that would also affect our dollars in commodity or USDA foods entitlements. And that's something that's being proposed in Washington as we speak. I've done, I've had a wonderful peer mentor, Lisa O'Dwyne of Ashland Public Schools. We've worked closely on items like marketing strategies, local outlets, for instance, the Girl Scouts, senior citizens, staffing, team building, training, community involvement in other local organizations. And that is my quarterly results as of the thirty-first. Now, please take into consideration the money that we spent on things like hardware, software, and some major improvements to equipment in the district. We bought a new serving line here for Emerson, because now we serve lunches here, and things like that. So, we are at a negative there, but there's been some major investment into the program. And I guess that's all I have.
All right. Any quick, quick, really quick.
Yes.
Are we still serving meals to schools on district?
We're serving to one private school in Hudson, called the Darnell School. They have twenty-four students, and we ship those meals. Actually, they come and pick them up in insulated containers and bring them, and that, too, increases our reimbursements. We were asked, actually asked by the Department of Education to help them. They were going to lose funding if they didn't have a meal program. So, Department of Ed called us and said, can you help these people? And we said, sure, we can.
Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me. It's so nice to be able to share.
Okay. And we have another visitor, real quick.
Hey, Laura, we're going to ask you to go quickly through this, too, please.
Okay. So, I'm just going to try to, shall I have Tom show me how to do this? Those make him fart.
I can't see it either.
Okay, so this is just an overview of the program. I wanted to thank everyone for taking the time to enjoy it.
We should over here, Laura.
Oh, it worked. On what we're all about. These are all links that you can go to on our website. You can see more of these pictures of the kids. We have our Twitter feed, and our spring newsletter highlights some of the things that are happening for the spring. Currently in the extended learning program, some of the things that are, are part of their tuition, is literature club, weaving, culture club, junior chef, as Tom had mentioned, quilting club, advanced sewing, beginner guitar, violin, piano program, library, scooter, sports, and so much more. I know you want to catch who the rain, I'm going to try to hurry.
No, actually, I wanted to see the program.
Oh, okay, okay. Outsource programs, Global Child, tennis, archery, chess wizards, morning and afternoon, let's go walk, the STEM science program, our Bolton and Stowe music programs, and there's a link to the STEM science, because the Stowe program was on their site. I wanted to see that. Okay. Oh. Bright ideas. I also have a mentorship with Melissa Murkhan-Smith from Ashland Extended Learning. I'll be visiting with her next week, and to share her resources and share mine, and just to see how we can collaborate. I'm part of the Network of Extended Day Directors. I have my first meeting this month also, that, and I'll be in full swing with that next year. Members of the group will help consult and share ideas and provide resources.
So, that's kind of encouraging.
Yeah, yep. Our future plans, there's more of our, our gang. Focus on endeavors to promote social emotional growth. We're moving, oh, that should actually say, we're moving the third, fourth, and fifth graders to Hail, to alleviate some of our space restrictions at Center. We have the addition of the piano and violin lessons in the Bolton program. We're hoping to, we want to extend that out to the day school. Theater program in Lancaster, dance program in Stowe, cooking, we want to extend that out. A Bolton video program, who are the people in the neighborhood? We want to get the kids out in the neighborhood, exploring it, making, you know, and capturing what goes on in their community. Expanding the junior mentorship program for the sixth grade, which is a transition program for our sixth graders who leave the program. They have an opportunity to join extended learning, two, one or two afternoons a week as mentorships. It kind of gives them a little bridge between leaving extended learning and going on to the sixth grade. Stowe, and at the Stowe new location, we're going to work on a Maker Steen space. Continuing to expand the high school work mentor program, which is amazing. My high school kids are.
I wanted to back to Steen, to make sure that everybody understands.
I'm sorry.
Steen is STEM, with the A in it for arts.
Got it. Good.
For the long time, Roland.
Yep. The, we have a lot of programs with the high school. They, they not only work for us, but they, they also mentor our students as part of their community service hours. We're looking at a breakfast option. If it doesn't work out for the whole school, we'd like to pilot it with an extended learning for the before-school program, and also, as Tom mentioned, the snack option for the extended learning. A community adult cheer with the Maker Space that will be at Hail, and we're offering, this is our second year, we're offering a Red Cross babysitting class for grades four through eight. There's a whole lot happening under the umbrella of extended learning, which includes the enrichment academies, which is a February camp, an April academy, and, and a new, well, it's not new, it was new when I came. I added the June camp, the before-school program, and that's, that's all there. Some people don't know that the enrichment academies are umbrella of the extended, under the extended learning. Okay, here we go. Current attendance by town. This is our presently, what our attendance is. This is before-school tuition overview, this is after-school tuition overview. And this is where we are. And Pat wanted to speak to this slide.
So, as you can see, the program this year, it's a little fuzzy, but if you look at some of the numbers here, the, we didn't have the enrollment that we had expected in some of the programs, so, especially the, the other enrichment programs, they, some of them, sometimes they don't take, isn't that what you, how you.
Well, our enrollment runs around forty.
Right.
Forty to sixty.
And the enrichment. As far as like revenue, it's a little bit less than we had anticipated. So, moving forward, we hope to expand a few other things and a few more offerings, and maybe, we have to change it up every once in a while, is, to make things more enticing. Like, you said that there was one of the camps that didn't run this year.
Well, all, all the camps.
Nut Camp, Nut Camp's the, one of the programs.
The enrichment activities, the archery program didn't run in the fall semester, but it ran in, it's running in the spring.
Right. So, this is, we projected we're going to have these particular programs running, but they don't necessarily run, depending on how many kids sign up. So, I just want you to be aware that that's, this is where we stand right now, that it's self-supporting this year, so we hope.
Is this the first year? So, self-supporting, you mean it is not drawing anything from the general?
Exactly. Well, it's self-supporting, we're not absorbing benefit costs as we do in the budget for next year. But going forward, we will be able to do that.
So, it will be.
We've made some changes, and some of them are reflected in this year's budget.
Okay, so that makes sense.
So, is the negative, is that going to get supported through the monies that you talked about earlier?
The negative.
The four hundred ninety-four thousand projected expenditures.
That's the net.
That's the net. Four hundred ninety-four.
Revenue minus your expenditures gives you your net of one hundred and fourteen.
You have a hundred and fourteen.
This is.
Right here.
No, that's, she, she's just saying, this is what it costs to run the program.
This is where we stand right now. Here's the revenue, this is what we've spent, and this is what we're going to come out with at the end.
Okay, so we don't have to supplement it this year?
No.
Nice job.
So, I recall there was a, in the budget, two hundred fifteen thousand expected to be drawn.
That is not reflected here.
So, therefore, we'll be short of that transfer.
Right. But there is money in the revolving fund balance to cover that.
Got it.
And that's, I think, what was originally anticipated, where those funds were to come from.
Yep.
Okay. Any other quick questions? No?
Tom and Laura, thank you so much.
Thank you both for having us. Really appreciate you.
Thank you.
For being so patient with us tonight. Okay, ASOP.
Anne Marie is going to come to the table and how, give you just a bit of a perspective, maybe that's the best way to say it, Anne Marie, just a bit of a perspective on how we've done with ASOP this year, and what our takeaways are.
Okay, great, thank you. I found a little bit of a review about what ASOP is, how it works, and then some of our challenges, some of the, some of the benefits that we've had of it, and then what we're doing looking forward to next year. We started using the ASOP substitute calling system at the start of the school year, in We started using the ASOP substitute calling system at the start of the school year in lieu of the substitute teacher caller. ASOP is an automated system that assigns substitutes to the vacancies, the assignments, when either teachers or instructional assistants are going to be out of their, out of their job for the day. Prior to ASOP, we'd been using a substitute caller, someone who did all this on a manual basis. This is how it works. Teachers and instructional assistants, when they know they're going to be out either in advance or the morning of, they log in and they enter their absence. It's connected to what their assignment is, where they are, so that the teachers and instructional assistants can, can go online or use a telephone to find out what the absences are, what the opportunities are to work as a sub, and then assign themselves, put themselves in for that assignment. In many cases, the teachers and instructional assistants have designated in advance people that they prefer to have as their subs. Those substitutes get notice of that upcoming vacancy before the general sub pool. If it gets very close to when the assignment is going to start, or in the case of a early in the morning, oh my gosh, I'm sick, can't go to work call, the ASOP starts making calls to all the substitutes who are available that day, qualified for the job and not already otherwise engaged in a subs assignment. So that's how, that's mostly the late morning sick calls. We've been using this system and getting used to it for about, for almost a year now. Some of the benefits that we've found are that it's aces when it comes to assigning people for the upcoming absences, the absences that are planned in advance. The teachers and instructional assistants like it because they're able to, in many cases, designate the substitutes that they're used to working with. They can put lesson plans or notes on ASOP for the person to see before they get there, and that works. And they don't get the O-DAC 30 phone calls, you know, gee, can you come in? Can you come in because I can't make it in? Subs can opt out of either the early morning phone calls if they prefer to do all of their scheduling of themselves online. They don't have to get any phone calls. Also, if they're going to be away, if they're going to Florida for two weeks, they can go on and say, I'm unavailable, don't call me for this period of time. Let's see. The preferred subs, there's a different visibility window, so that the preferred subs get the, get the notification of the absence and the opportunity to apply for that position, you know, to assign themselves to that position in advance and then it goes to the, to the sub pool. Another good benefit is that it tracks Affordable Care Act requirements. If our subs work more than a certain number of hours weekly, they're eligible for health insurance benefits. We don't want that, so that the ASOP system cuts them off from assigning themselves to positions that would put them in that health insurance eligibility. So that's a good thing. Automation, who also has advantage, just because it's automation, it's 24 hours a day. We can't ask a subcaller to be available 24 hours a day, people get sick, machines don't. So that, that's a big benefit. The challenges are, no matter what the system is, it's not a totally hands-off system. You know, there are subs who are either unable or unwilling to catch on to some of the features. So that I get phone calls, the secretaries in the school sometimes get phone calls, and the assistant principals sometimes get phone calls. How do I do this? How do I do that? How do I do the other thing? I mistakenly signed up, accepted an assignment I didn't need to. I mistakenly withdrew my sonus and I didn't need to, things like that. So there's that part of it. You don't get the in-person contact, you know. You can do, if you're a person, especially our subcaller, our Mrs. Sol was very personable. She was a wonderful woman, and it was hard to say no to her. You know, it's not hard to say, mm, two for no, you know, and go over and go back to sleep. Whereas if you've got somebody saying, oh gee, we really need you, and if someone has a strong, fast, fast personality, it's a lot harder to say no. Another, another challenge that we had is that we skimped initially on training when we started this. And I'm not making excuses, I'm just telling you the way it worked out. I came in the middle of June, and it was, it was, after I finished up, I was going to put my, I was going to put my lunch, but I would put my coat. It was August, and I said, oh heavens, we have to onboard ourselves. Even the onboarding process to sign yourself up with ASOP and get everything entered on there is really a two-month stint. And that's a district that you know the players and you know, you know, you have something later at the place. We skidded through it in four weeks, came to a screeching halt and the day before school started. And said, huh, phew, I mean, I was like, oh my gosh, what have I done to show the whole? It was just, it was quite, Vicki and Darcy will tell you, they were pulling me out the ceiling. So that we did skip a little bit on the training, so that, I'm not going to lie, a lot of it was that the substitutes and the teachers were guided to the self-study, you know, and we probably, that's probably not the best way to do it. So that that was, that was an issue. Looking forward, most subs, most districts use ASOP, and some of our subs are also on different, on different districts months already. It was interesting to hear, Mr. Sullivan, I hate the, you know, they have the, he said municipal finance for dummies. I hate the, like, the dummies part of it, but one of the things I'm working on is an ASOP for dummies book that will be done by four schools.
A primer.
On ASOP, yes. You can only work on a little bit of time because it's not fascinating work. So by the time schools, each secretary, each substitute, and each of the buildings will have clear directions and much better, we'll have an opportunity to train them properly because there'll be time, there'll be time to do that. And here we go, we. I got you back on schedule.
I got to tell you something, Anne Marie. So overall, takeaway from this is, is it a thumbs up?
I'd say it's like two thumbs up for advanced absences. The overriding problem with substitutes, period, whether they be called, or whether they be called, or whether they be an electronic system or an in-person system, is finding enough of them. We don't find any more or less them by having the electronic system than we did with the person, except for the arm twisting part of it. And we did have a couple of substitutes who were just, just threw up their hands and said, you know what? I'm just not going to do it. So either they work outside the system, and some of the secretaries work around, they don't implement it with integrity, as we say, and they will call those people, or they just said, forget it, I'm just not going to sub anymore, I don't want to learn how to use the computer, or whatever it is. So that's the, you know, that's the negative part of it, is the people who don't want to use the system. And then, of course, the overlying, they want enough subs in the world problem. It really isn't an ASOP problem, it's just a sub.
Yeah, we're going to, you know that's coming around, but go ahead.
A lot of districts have ASOP, and so there are subs that can sign up for multiple districts.
That's right.
Have we had any experience with someone saying, oh, goodie, Nishoba's on ASOP, I think I'll put my name in there?
I don't know, I haven't heard any stories like that.
Okay.
I think it's, it's the norm, really, the number of districts that have got the in-person subcaller now is getting fewer and fewer. You know, it's pretty much.
I guess our point is, is that people who substitute can look beyond, say, so if I live in, like, Atlanta, and I wanted to sub at the middle school, but there was nothing, I could look and see Clinton or Maynard or some other places if they had ASOP.
If, that's right, if you have ASOP, and if you've registered with that district.
Right, right.
We just don't have strangers out there, right.
So I know where you're going, so go ahead.
Well, I'm just wondering, do we, do we retract yet? Do we have less classes without a substitute?
Well, we don't have data on what the classes were before.
Okay.
So.
So we're tracking that now, so we can have.
ASOP tracks it for us. We've had about, it was about 1,700 fills this far this year. The teachers, instructional assistants who have been ASOP-ed in with a substitute. It's about between a 70 and 80 percent fill rate.
So we have to work on getting that up.
Yes.
Has the increase in the rate helped at all?
The increase in the rate has helped push the substitutes towards the teacher assignments as opposed to the, to the instructional assistance assignments. I'm not sure if it's helped overall, but it certainly has met the goal that the personal subcommittee had of wanting to have, thinking it a lesser evil to have nobody to sub for a classroom of students than to have an instructional assistant unfilled. So yes, it has done a nice job of pushing them towards the teacher.
Okay. Mark?
So say again, how many instances you needed a substitute so far this year?
Well, I didn't say how many we needed, I said how many we got.
How many did?
1,796.
And that represents 70 to 80 percent of what actually you needed. So somewhere around 2,000 fillings you needed, and you only got, you had about 1,700.
If you're, if that's the math, yeah.
So something, so something like somewhere in the couple hundreds opportunities where you had a classroom with no teacher all day?
No.
No.
No, no, no.
No.
You need to have some kids.
Yeah, we wouldn't leave, you know, 20 in their, to their own devices.
So what does the manager do in that case when you don't have subs?
Either they have an instructional assistant cover the class for the day and leave the instructional assist, take the instructional assistant out of the classroom, or they're creative in other ways. Sometimes they put a teacher volunteer in for the instructional assistant and put the instructional assistant in. Yeah. I've not done that, I think I've seen Mr. Schmidt, you know, in a couple of.
Welcome back to both classrooms on rare occasion.
Just general public, I mean, how difficult is it to become a substitute? And what kind of a person do you want as a substitute?
Well, we want someone who's, we want someone who's reliable, we want someone who's got some experience with children, we want someone with two years of college, someone who can pass out Cory and fingerprinting requirements, and is infinitely patient.
And so if the general public wanted to participate, how difficult is it to go on ASOP and with this primer that you have?
You know what, it's not hard at all. I asked my husband, and they don't come any more technologically challenged, I said, honey? And he said, yeah, I could do this.
Tom, thank you.
It's a two-pager, and it's, and I'm happy to offer private tutoring to anyone who finds it difficult.
It sounds like, it sounds like what we really need is more substitute teachers.
Exactly.
That's exactly what we need.
Which is why we increased the rate. All right, so one more quickie, Kathy?
Do we have a posting on our, on whatever we use?
School spring.
Yeah, for substitute teachers.
Do we have postings on school spring? We've got flyers hanging up at, at Pittsburgh State University, Worcester State University, Assumption College, and one other, Worcester, Worcester, one, there you go, and someplace else.
Well, that's good, yes.
Awesome.
I noticed that Lexington advertised in the regional suburban papers for substitutes.
They're paying that rate, you know, you want to, you want to cough up the dough?
You may need to do that, I think, to.
Oh, my gosh, he's going to lose him the purse strings!
Actually, as I recall, he was.
I was the one who said.
That's exactly right.
Wow, I'm impressed.
That's right, that's right. He was the lone voice on that. I recall that very clearly.
Not alone, just a minority.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Really appreciate it. We needed those updates on the money, and the reason for those last three updates is because we had funded some programs and we needed, last year, the beginning of this year, and we needed to see if they were working to continue. Okay, old business, the, in your pocket is, and I'm going to turn it over to Brooke, the MOU, the memorandum of understanding for the.
The SRO.
SRO, which is a safety resource officer at the high school. And the discussion or the document is an agreement between superintendent of schools and the chief of police in Bolton. But the school committee needs to approve.
Right, that's exactly what I want to do. And I don't know, Mr. Lowe, if you have any, any comments that you'd like to make on it tonight. Certainly, Mr. Lowe and I had some discussion earlier, as do the chief and I. This basically is the exact same document that you had last time. Ran it past a lawyer with your question. Remember that you wanted to know about, should this be rather than Nishoba Regional School District? Should it be the high school, you recall that? And the answer is no, it needs to be Nishoba Regional School District. So we ended up leaving it exactly as you saw it last week. So at this point in time, I would strongly encourage that we go ahead and make a motion to accept. And I believe that this is coming up at your meeting tomorrow night with the board of selectmen, and they've had it, I believe, for about a week now to review. So I'm not sure what will come out of that meeting, but I'd like us to move forward at this level.
So moved.
Thank you.
Settled, is that what you said?
I said so moved.
So moved.
Yeah.
All right. And apparently. The question's Kathy?
Yeah, will the other two towns have to approve it as well, or is it just?
No, this is strictly between us and the Bolton police department.
For the high school.
It's for the high school.
It's for the SRO, but is there a similar understanding agreement, whatever it is, about the relationship between law enforcement in Stowe and the schools and law enforcement in Lancaster and the schools?
No, not, not with regards to this. And to be honest with you, we actually do have a very dated, I wouldn't call it necessarily an MOU, I can't remember what it is with Stowe, but that's actually specific to Stowe. And this is specifically with Bolton and Nishoba Regional High School, so that's why this is specific.
Do you have police officers from Lancaster in the schools in Lancaster?
I don't think that you do.
I guess what I'm more interested in is that the schools understand the circumstances under which they need to involve law enforcement. And it's spelled out in here very clearly in terms of this agreement. And, you know, just a concern that people have a general awareness so that things don't get ignored that need to be, you know.
I would say, I hear what you're saying, honestly, we've got such a great relationship in each of our communities. I mean, we work very, very closely with them.
It's just a question because of this and how it spells everything.
No, but I think it's a great point, because I just know that, I mean, I can't think of a week that's gone by that we have not communicated in our schools with the police. Like, it's, it's that regular.
Okay.
Sure, just as a piece of information.
One day removed.
There is no official person, or police officer, but there is a liaison who's assigned in Lancaster to liaison with the schools.
Which is basically what we have at Stowe as well.
The idea that there is one point person, that if something's going on, they have a, they have an official.
And it provides some beautiful consistency.
I'm just wondering, if this is in a favor between superintendent and the Bolton police chief, why are we taking a vote?
Well, it, it, it's the, we're authorizing her to sign it. It's the, but it's the chief and the superintendent that pull it together, but it comes from the support of this group. So that's why I'm looking for that.
Okay, so we're saying it's okay that you have this agreement in place?
We need to authorize, yeah.
The formal motion is we're authorizing the superintendent to sign the agreement on behalf of the school committee.
Exactly.
Is that what the motion is?
No, we really need to have a formal motion, but one's out there, so let's go with it.
All those in favor? It's unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to run through the subcommittee reports. Is there a finance report? There is not.
There's not, I was not intending to report.
You don't have to, it's all good. Personnel?
No report, we're meeting on May 15th.
One comment though on personnel, for those of you, I did send out a reminder, for those of you that haven't sent me the superintendent evaluation, please do get it to me by Friday. Kathy, thank you for all the work on that, it was so easy, so easy.
It's so much better than it used to be.
Yeah, so great. Paul, please tell us more things on.
So.
Look at, she's got papers.
We met with Dorothy again today. She's coming back to finish section J, June 7th. But in the meantime, we'll be having a meeting in two weeks before the regular committee meeting. So I, there is a, there is a JQ policy, student fees, fines, and charges. We can talk about that at the next meeting, but it just basically, I guess I'm a little unclear what you want. Add, if you want a whole other policy added in, just for, it says any fee or charge due to any school in the district and not paid at the end of the school year will be carried forward to the next succeeding school year as such debts are considered to be the debts of the student to the district.
Different policy related to food services.
Just to food services and lunch bills.
Policy that we do not have.
It's, and MASC does not either, so we have.
So why do we need this policy?
Oh, MASC does have one. I saw it today.
On lunches?
On, on, basically, we need to comply with the various laws while also implementing a policy for allowing free lunch and collecting appropriate things.
Is it one we have, what is the, okay, all right.
I don't know, it passed before my eyes today.
Okay, so we haven't, we haven't looked at it yet?
I can't remember, I think we did actually, did this afternoon.
No. No. Okay, all right, we'll look it up. Okay.
Now we're going to have to talk.
Yeah. Okay.
So you think you'll have something for us?
And another question I have for you is what do you, so we still have one thing in A, Donna's working on. There's one thing in B that Dorothy is checking on. And then C is all set for you guys to look at, and then D, we're waiting for two for finance. So do you want to see everything else in all of those sections, or you're not?
I believe in order for you guys to get your stuff done, you should give us whatever you have now.
Yeah, okay.
Make it available, and then give us a timeline on.
C, we can do it the next meet, at the next meet, and I guess the June 7th meeting, we'll be able to do it.
The only thing is, if we're going to have like a slew, we need a week or so to review.
No, I, we're not going to have anything until, I don't, I won't know until all those other people that I just mentioned get back to me when those will be ready for you. Do you know what I'm saying?
Oh, I thought you meant that there was a section.
C is all done.
So you said, so good to it.
But what I'm saying is, do you want to see the remainder of the other sections without those policies? Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with you parcelling it up. You have to track what's been reviewed, so.
We're trying to see.
I don't know why we would want to wait, though.
I just have a question about, is it in the MASC?
Website?
Yeah, with our name on it yet, and is that ultimately where it's going to be?
Yes.
So right now, where the policies reside on the website as they update?
We have ours still, the existing policies on the website.
Okay.
And then, so Dorothy, they, every month, she just kind of has somebody from her office pull from that.
Okay.
Matches it up with MASC policy, finds the holes. We had a lot of trouble with J where the coding was wrong on, or the coding maybe has changed.
Yes.
Since our policies were published, so that was tricky, matching up the coding.
So I think unless it's going to be a nightmare for you to organize and orchestrate, I think you should put out what you can.
Can we just have C first and get that out there?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think if we give too much, and then once we give you back C, done, then go ahead.
Then go to the next section, but don't hold it up.
There shouldn't be anything to do necessarily, I mean, unless there are C tests.
Would it changes me?
Yes.
Yeah, so we just need to see, we will approve you the changes.
Yes, yeah, but we would approve them all together.
Right, but we still got to read them all.
But if you gave us all C, at least we could get your vote, is that what's done?
Yeah, so you want the before and after?
No, is it, is it redlined?
There's, yeah, yes.
Then just give us the redlined version?
Well, it's, but there's some, there's some, there's some that are totally eliminated, there's some that are added in, it's not like every policy has changes.
Redlined.
Does it tell us that? Huh? If it's eliminated, does it tell us that? Do you see the one that was eliminated?
We, I would have to tell you that.
You might want to send both for the first time. Okay. How many are?
And C. I don't know off the top of my head, C is pretty small, if that's what it's done.
Good, send them all.
Yeah, so at least we can see how you did it. There's like maybe, I don't know, I want to say eight or 10 or something, it's not even...
Okay, so what are we doing? You're going to, no, 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 something completely different, so you're going to...
Well, C, C will be ready for us to vote on.
Okay.
But you're going to send it to us when?
I can send it...
Well, wait a second, hold on.
When do you want it on the agenda?
Is there a way for us to have, Alita, is there a tab we can create in the policies subcommittee packet, so that she doesn't have to email these all over the place?
That's a good idea. Not without, not without getting them from Dorothy and uploading everyone.
Oh, their paper?
No, it's, no, she sends us a...
You have electronic files?
Electronic files, yeah.
Okay, so we have electronic files, are the electronic files the ones that are redlined?
Yes, well, there's two sets for each, yeah, there's, like, once we, she sends us the C, it has like, yeah, I mean, it's, I have copies here, I'll look at them, but there'd be one manual and in it, or one section, and it would have our policy, and then the next page would be if there's a MASC policy that differs, you know, there might be a recommendation to delete a policy.
Oh!
Or there could be a policy, yeah, so...
So you're going to need us to vote on even deletions?
Yes, you approve it in form, so you don't have to go through policy by policy.
But you know we're going to.
Well, I don't know what I'm doing with my two hours every, every month, because, yeah, I mean, it, so, yeah.
So I think, I think it would...
I guess I'm unsure what my charge is.
Okay, so I, I think if you have a section that's done.
It is, C is done.
And you want us to take a look at it, because I think we should, if, if, if we can post them somewhere versus emailing...
Yeah, I have, I have a file that I can...
That I sent to Mark.
Okay, so, Alita, do you think there's a place on the site where we could just, like, have, like...
Temporary?
Just, I don't know, do you think in the, you're looking at me?
Well, when are you going to do it, at the next meeting?
Yeah, what, I guess that's when I, when do you want?
When can you send that out?
I can get that to, I don't know, by the end of the week, so...
Oh, yeah, well, if we can do it for the, we haven't looked at the, yeah, put it on the next agenda.
Well, then Friday, I'm out tomorrow, but Friday, if you can get it to me Friday, or Monday, whatever.
I can't get it to you Friday. Sorry.
All right, Monday, then I'll, then I'll just start to build the June 7th packet.
Okay, great.
It'll just be in the packet.
Perfect, there, resolved, that works, does that work?
Send it to me, I'll just post it.
Yeah, that, that's what I, I think that's where I started, we can approve Section C on June 7th.
Well, awesome, now we have a better understanding of where you're at.
Yeah.
All right, are we good? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
There's nothing on CPAC, nothing on TEC, superintendent's report.
Just quickly, I'm not giving you a formal report tonight, because I'm just reporting out on the principal search, because that's basically consumed most of my time the last couple of weeks, actually, so just to kind of give you a flavor, so now you've met Kyle Brady tonight, we took the exact same process that we used at Hale and rushed through that for the high school. So we've wrapped up the high school, but I just kind of want to go through the steps. So in both schools, we started with a search committee, and Anne Marie, I know you'll catch me if I'm missing something here, because this really was your baby, Anne Marie worked very, very hard through this process, established a strong search, I felt, strong search committee for both searches, they, they took all of the applicants, applications, I believe they were over 40 for both, called it down first, Anne Marie went through and called out anybody who wasn't appropriately certified, that just couldn't be really considered in the mix, then the remaining applications came forward to the search committee, search committee then went through and chose its top runners, I believe it was eight in both searches, then from there, they met all of those eight, they interviewed all of them, called through and pushed forward their top three, and then from there, that went to the principals, the principal then performed, the principals' group and myself, although I didn't really actively participate, I just sat in and watched the interviews that they held, thereafter, we took those, those couple, in Hale, it was two, at the high school, it was three finalists, and put them forward into a parent forum, it was a parent faculty, and at the high school, also student forum, so there were the three places, and it worked out very nicely, because we had the three candidates, so it worked out very nicely. We had people from, administrators from our group that helped to lead this, for example, Joan DeAngelis went around with the parent group at the high school, we also taped the high school parent, the parent forums, then we put them online for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we sent out another email blast, if you will, to say that they were online, if you'd like to provide any additional feedback, you could, the videos have well over 200 hits, and then we got a flood of additional feedback between Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday this week. I feel very strongly that we have vetted as much as we possibly could in between, Anne Marie and I took turns, and we did all of the reference checks, for example, today I sat down with, actually physically sat down with the superintendent to talk about a candidate, you know, I, I connected with all of the, any of the superintendents that were listed on them, I called all of them, or in today's case, sat down and visited with them. So we now have, at this point in time, we've got Kyle Brady now for Hale, and for the high school, we are just in the process of beginning to offer a contract to somebody, so we have, we are that far along, so definitely between now and our next meeting, we'll have, should have, a new high school principal, we'll see, see how the negotiations go, so it's going to depend on negotiations now.
All right, thank you for that.
That's where we're at.
Any notable correspondence items? I got a...
I missed something.
Can I?
Of course.
Thank you. I also went to the high school and spent a fair chunk of yesterday and today at the high school, meeting with teachers and staff department chairs about, so I also had face-to-face feedback, as well as the email feedbacks, I forgot to add that.
No worries, no worries. I did get a couple of questions on school choice, if we were open, but other than that, nothing. I'm assuming everybody's reviewed the minutes in the packet and the warrant for me 12th, and assume that those are approved. Items for next agenda, we have the, so Susan's policy, C, the C policies, I think I might, Kathy, do you think we'll be able to do the superintendent valuation roll-up?
I think, it's up to you, everybody has to get stuff to you by Friday.
Yes.
And then, I think if you are able to...
I put a spreadsheet together, and I sent an email out to the folks that haven't sent me something to remind them that it's Friday.
Yeah.
And then I'll...
But you should be...
I think we're in a good place.
Yeah, to do it on the 7th.
Great, all right.
I have the school committee handbook, is that still on?
Um, yeah.
You think?
Oh, I know.
Okay.
Draft.
All right, other than that, I think we are going to go into an executive session,